City Council. Good evening. Now can you hear me? Good. Barb Nosworthy, Mayor, and welcome to the September 6th Durango City Council meeting. Appreciate all of you coming out and we look forward to hearing from you during public comment. I'm going to start with the roll call, please.
Councilor Baxter.
Present.
Councilor Boskins.
Present.
Councilor Avio.
Here.
Mayor Petan Youssef.
Here.
And Mayor Nosworthy.
Present. And do we have a translator?
Yes, Mayor. We have Diego Pons.
Diego, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Diego Pons here today on behalf of the Community Language Cooperative with my colleague Olga Sosa, the other interpreter. Thanks as always for having us at your meeting. The organizers of this meeting have made a commitment towards language justice. So as always, this means that we're here to help create a space for people to participate and engage in the language of their hearts. Quite simply, the language so you're almost comfortable in. So we'll continue using simultaneous interpretation to help create the space here in Zoom in English and in Spanish. Once I'm finished saying the statement in English or repeated in Spanish, at that moment, we turn on the interpretation. And once the interpretation is turned on, you'll be able to see a globe icon of this interpretation there in the bottom right-hand corner of your computer screen. Please like that globe icon when it appears on your screen and please select your preferred language. So if you happen to be joining today's meeting on yourself on your tablet, I'll ask you to please look for the more button or the three dots button in order to select your preferred language that way. So if you're not fully bilingual, we ask that you please select your preferred language so you may utilize the interpretation in case anyone were to speak in the opposite language. If you are bilingual, however, you can just feel free to listen to everyone in their original language. You wouldn't have a language channel and you will not ever have to hear our voices. As always, when you select your language, you can check new original audio. So you don't have to be here in both languages at the same time. As always, we'd like to remind the English speaking audience, just please pay attention to maintain your pace at a conversational pace and please make sure you don't pick up your reading speed. So thank you so much. Buenas tardes a todos y a todas. Mi nombre es Diego Pons. Soy de parte del Cooperativo Comunitario de la Justicia del Lenguaje con mi colega Olga Sosa. Como siempre, gracias por invitarnos hoy a su reunión. Los organizadores de esta reunión se han comprometido hoy a servir la justicia del lenguaje. Lo que eso significa como siempre es que queremos crear un espacio para que todas las personas puedan participar e involucrarse en el idioma a su corazón, que es simplemente el idioma en que todas las personas se sientan más cómodas. Y hoy vamos a continuar utilizando la interpretación simultánea aquí en Zoom para poder crear ese espacio en inglés y en español. Y cuando yo termine de decir esto, vamos a activar la interpretación. Ya cuando la interpretación está activada, usted va a poder observar un icono de globo terráqueo que era interpretación ahí abajo en la derecha de su pantalla. Por favor, seleccione ese icono de globo terráqueo cuando aparezca en su pantalla y por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido. Pero si ustedes asisten hoy a esa reunión en su celular o en su tableta, yo le voy a pedir que, por favor, busquen la opción que dice more, que quiere decir más, o el botón de tres puntos para que usted pueda seleccionar su idioma preferido de esa manera. Si usted no es completamente bilingüe, le vamos a pedir que, por favor, seleccione su idioma preferido para que usted pueda utilizar interpretación cuando alguien está hablando en el otro idioma. Pero si usted sí es bilingüe, se puede sentir libre hoy de escuchar a todos en su idioma original. No tenía que seleccionar ningún canal de idioma y jamás tenía que escuchar nuestras voces. Como siempre, cuando usted selecciona este idioma, puede hacer clic en silenciar el audio original para escuchar ambos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Diego. I'm going to start, as I do with the city council meetings, with reading a land acknowledgement. This is my statement. It does not reflect the statement from city council or other individuals.
Can't hear.
You still can't hear?
Can't hear you.
Okay, I'm speaking into it right there. It's right in front of me.
Can't hear.
I think the volume's turned up as much as it can go. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I am going to read a statement. It is my statement. It does not reflect the views of council or any individual council member. This is a land acknowledgement. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the N'uchu, D'nay, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in my acknowledging this legacy. Thank you. Now, we need to just check and see with any counselors, is there any conflict or perceived conflict of interest on anything on tonight's agenda? No, great. What I'd like to do, first of all, is welcome all of you again. If you haven't signed up for public comment, there is a signup sheet. What I would like to, though, to ask of council is if I can make two changes to the agenda before we start. There's a person here to receive a proclamation. They've spent 26 years in service, and I would like to have that go first, that proclamation, before public comment. So that is one change I'd like to make to the agenda. I'd also like to point out that the city manager will be giving an update on our progress with working with the county on the closure of Purple Cliffs and other activities. I would like to move that from item 6.23 to item 6.21. So that will take place after public comment. Is there support for that? So what I'd like to now ask of the public is I see many familiar faces and I appreciate you coming out. This is democracy at its finest. I will ask that you honor the three-minute time requirement. I understand there is a video and it is four minutes long, so I'm going to seek council's indulgence in us being able to view that one video that is over four minutes.
Concerning?
Concerning Purple Cliffs, if I understand it correctly.
Okay, that's good to hear. I also want to just read a little bit of information on this. So, public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that are not scheduled for a hearing or public testimony or that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. As this is a hybrid meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. All written comments received by the city clerk by noon have been delivered to council and will be summarized in the meeting minutes. I will remind you that you will have three minutes.
Mayor, the proclamation.
Oh, yes. Thank you. And I said I was going to do that and then I got around it. I got too far ahead of myself. Let's see, who is the representative who's here for Sandy Campbell? Thank you. If you'll join me. So that's, okay, no. How should we send it? And you are?
Renee, her daughter.
Her daughter, yes. Okay, thank you. Let me make certain I have this. Now you can hear me with the microphone? This is, this is a great thing here. You're going to enjoy this. Okay, so this is the 2022 Library Community Champion for Sandy Campbell, who is represented today by her daughter. Whereas recognizing the success of any public library is enhanced and sustained by dedicated citizens, the Durango Public Library Advisory Board will single out certain individuals for particular appreciation through its Library Community Champion initiative. The awarding of this personal distinction honors singular achievement and commitment on behalf of the library and in turn, the community. And whereas Sandy Campbell was nominated for the Library Community Champion Award for her tireless service as a volunteer material shelve, and whereas Sandy served as a volunteer for over 26 years, every week, rain or shine, and whereas Sandy was nominated for her dedication, hard work, and friendliness to library staff and volunteers, and whereas the Durango Public Library Advisory Board wishes to recognize Sandy Campbell publicly for their dedication to the library and the community. Now therefore, I Barbara Nosworthy, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby recognize Sandy Campbell as the 2022 Library Community Champion. And her daughter is here. If you'd like to say a few things.
I would love to talk about my mom a whole lot, but I'm really nervous, so I won't. She has been a volunteer for 26 years at the library, rain or shine. And I joke with people that my mom gave birth to my sisters and I at the library. She didn't, but it felt like that. We were there all the time. It's her favorite outing every week now, to go once or twice a week. She took both of her grandchildren, great-grandchildren, to the library and had them get their library cards when they were weeks old. So the library is so important to her and to all of her children. The library is so important to her and to all of her children. And she can't be here this evening, but we are having a big party for her at the library in about two weeks. And she'd love for anyone to be there. So, thank you.
Now I'll try not to get too far ahead of myself again. Thank you. All right, so, public participation. I want to make certain those that would like to speak have signed up. We'll start with people in the audience and then we'll go to anyone virtually who would like to speak. You will have, there you head, just go ahead right there. You will have three minutes. I will start waving my hand at about 30 seconds and that's your signal to wrap it up. And while I appreciate whatever the thought that people put into their comments, we do need to limit it to the three minute period. Thank you. So, on that note, and if I mispronounced your name, it's because I really can't read your handwriting or I'm not certain of the pronunciation. Beth Lambert-Lambers? Thank you. Please come up to the dais, begin to the micro- or to the microphone there. And state if you're a resident of the city or the county.
Microphones are my jam. I'm Beth Lamberson Warren. I'm a 40-year resident of Durango. A lot of folks know me from my time at KSUT. In the last few years, I've been working in community development in the area. And I'm here tonight to speak on the challenge we're going to face with Purple Cliffs closing. In 2019, I was part of the formation of the Facebook page Be Kind Durango. It was just around Christmas. How could we help people who missed the project Merry Christmas deadline, so forth and so on? Then we decided to keep it active into 2020 and then COVID hit. That page today is at 6,000 people. I encourage you to check it out. Through that page, it's people helping people. Housing and food insecure people have been assisted. We've helped people leave the community due to domestic violence, providing them with enough money to get safely. And we've also worked very hard for people who have gained housing to receive help and support. Doorstep, housewarming parties, baby showers, and the like. Of these 6,000 people, we're not elected to serve our community, nor were we paid or tasked to do so. We simply did it and we still do it today. My personal commitment has always been very one-on-one. In 2020, in a partnership with Housing Solutions, a formerly homeless young woman came into my house. Two hours after signing her lease, I determined, well, she explained to me she was five months pregnant. This was a new territory for me and very challenging. And I had to get a lot of help and support from people in the community to understand that by just being a do-gooder might not be enough. But we did everything we could and I did even more than I should. She had that baby and went into Section 8 housing that I arranged through a private transaction because during COVID, all the caseworkers were shut down and nobody was able to really interact one-on-one. In May of this year, through the Nextdoor app, I brought a gentleman into my house at a very reduced rate who was struggling in Durango. He has since moved on because it wasn't a fit. I've donated up to three bikes to individuals, most recently two through Nina and through the lovely Betsy Morris, that have helped people get to work. Who here in this room has an extra bike in their garage? Contact Betsy and let's put that into worthy hands. Lately, I found out through the Be Kind page, a couple, I'm going to call them Ms. and Mr. White. They needed a secure place to store their belongings because they're camping in their car, they're camping legally, but when they put their totes outside their car to sleep, they're stolen from. She has five fused cervical vertebrae and MS. They're working two jobs each that they found on Indeed and they're not able to live with their adult children in Phoenix because of the heat. More than ever, they need that established designated camping site and also the safe parking areas. The thing I learned is the last thing I can take from somebody other than their life and their breath is their dignity. And if I'm the one to do that, then shame on me. Let's all work together here.
The next person signed up is Patty Zink. Thank you. Get myself ready here. First, I want to thank all of you that serve our community. I know you give your time and energy and commitment to making our community a better place. And I know I haven't expressed my gratitude lately. So, thank you for that. I'm on a, I'm speaking on behalf of a much lighter subject and that's in favor of bicycle assists on the natural surface trails. Now, you would expect I probably would be in favor of this because I own mountain bike specialist. But my real answer to, or my real reason is because I can ride with my grandchildren. They're much faster than I am and I can keep up with them on the road on my e-bike. So that's my real motivation. But I just want to talk about how bicycle assist bikes allow for diversity and inclusion of other users, older people, people with disabilities, people riding for their physical and mental health, and folks who are not physically strong but want to ride a cost-effective mode of transportation. I think e-bikes are the future. We've been talking about them since 2016. And again, I know you all have a packed agenda and lots of decisions. So I'm just going to ask you to make a decision. I've heard a lot of arguments from the user groups. I've looked at the studies. I know you all have gone to Bentonville and studied Jefferson County. And my statement to some of the other users groups and probably some of you have heard me say this before, if we can only legislate manners, life would be easier because that's part of the issue. I think there's some bad apples. There's bad apples in every crowd and I think it's upon us as community leaders and people involved in the bicycle industry to educate our customers and our citizens on being safe and considerate. And like I say, unfortunately, we can't mandate that, but it'd be great if we could. So I guess a mine is a much lighthearted topic for you all tonight. Thank you again for your time and all you do for our community. Thank you, Patty. We'll hear from Ray Godfrey.
My name's Ray Godfrey. I'm a local businessman. I've lived here since 1996. I came tonight to support the pedal assist bike motion that's in front of you. First of all, I want to say thank you for the effort that you've put in to try to resolve this issue. For me personally, pedal assist mountain bikes have made a huge difference in my life. I have two sons that are 30 and 35 years old who are avid mountain bike riders. And there's no way I'd be able to spend time with my sons riding without the assistance of the pedal assist bike. I would like to clear up some misnomers about pedal assist bikes, especially mountain bikes and road bikes to a certain extent. They do not function without input from the rider. There's people that believe that you get on a pedal assist bike, push a button and it goes. And that's not the case. You have to actually put your input in. There's different power settings that allow you to increase or decrease the amount of power that you're using on the bike. But it definitely requires skill and input to make it function. I'm here tonight because I want to try to support the local community in moving some of these pedal assist bikes into areas where we're not supposed to be going right now. It almost makes us the bad guys out there when in fact, the bikes are not harming the environment anymore than another mountain bike is. Like Patty referred to earlier, you've got bad apples in everything that you do. And certainly, we see on the trail, you know, young kids just screaming down these hills. And sometimes it's scary because you wonder if they're going to stop in time to keep from hitting you. It's not so much us that's going fast because most of us that are riding pedal assist bikes have some sort of a health issue. I have a bad hip, so it makes it easier for me to be able to ride with friends and certainly my sons. But I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and I hope you'll consider all the different elements that are a part of this conversation because it's not quite as simple as some people would make it sound. It's not a black and white issue. The people that are riding the pedal assist bikes, most of us are over 40 years old. Most of us have played really hard most of our lives and we're not really just to sit down on the couch and give up. I'm certainly not. I've been very active in sports my entire life. I'm getting ready to turn 64 and I'm still going. But the pedal assist bike allows me to ride with friends that I normally wouldn't be able to ride with. And we are very careful out there to make sure that we're honoring the rules of the trail, so to speak. So I appreciate your time and appreciate you guys considering.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Next, we'll hear from Jody Fertney. And I do want to point out that on the screen, there is a timer. So if you occasionally look up at the screen, the speakers, you can get a sense of how much time you have left. But if I raise my hand, you've got about 30 seconds.
Thank you. I'm Jody Fertney. I live in the city of Durango. And as I spoke with you all last month, I am a strong advocate for Class 1 pedal assist bikes on all of our soft surface trails. And I don't, I've, on all trails, not, not piecemeal trails, hopefully. I don't feel that Class 1 pedal assist bikes are any different than any other technology that is currently on bikes. We have electronic shifters, we have electronic rebound, now we have electronic pedaling. So it's, it's, it's just another facet of technology that has come to bear. I think our current policy is a bit discriminatory against the elderly and disabled. Having, as I spoke to you last time, I broke my foot and my, my Class 1 pedal assist mountain bike has been instrumental in, in my healing. Jefferson County, as somebody alluded to before, has had, has about the same number of miles of trails as we do. They have millions of riders. They allow Class 1 pedal assist bikes and they are able to do that without any problems. So I think we should consider that, that huge experiment and make our decisions. But I kind of want to end with, I recently, like last fall, we went on a mountain bike ride. It was a multi-day mountain bike ride with my Class 1 pedal assist bike. And it was, it was transformational for me in that I could ride with people. Bicycling for me has always been very solitary because I'm always in the back, I'm the slowest. And so it was really awesome. It was, it was called the Aquarius Trail and they allow bikes, you know, Class 1 bikes and it was awesome to be able to hang with people. So please, please, please allow Class 1 pedal assist bikes on all the natural surface trails so that people don't have to have a quiver of bikes to ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. I'm going to make an apology. I tried to follow in order, but when I got the materials, they were out of order. So we're going to now go back to the original first people to sign up. So my apologies to those that wondered why you weren't brought up first, when you signed up first. So Donna Rinalt? Row.
Thank you very much. My name is Donna Rowe. My name is Donna Rowe and I'm from Durango. And I would like to cede my three minutes of time to Carolyn Kinser, the Chair of Neighbors in Need Alliance, Nina.
Great, Carol. Caroline, thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad. Theo, I understand. Exactly, which is why we wanted to do the three-minute thing, so you wouldn't top anybody else. But, okay, well, I just, what I wanted to do, what we wanted to do is give you all the opportunity to have some of our unhoused neighbors talk to you in their own words. So that would be the video. I could have never done enough. Both? A direct link to it. A direct link to it.
Hey, Durango. The cost of living in Durango. People want to pay minimum wage, does not work. You have to work two jobs, two and a half jobs, just to make the cost of living here, and it's a long game. And we get something like $13 an hour every night.
I'll be able to sleep. I cook for myself. I'll be able to have a lot of people too. But bring them up and take a shower or wash a house. I work two jobs, I work thumpkins and Fridays. I've been there a lot to this place even though I live here. I still make sure everybody has what I have. I've got a case of drugs. The whole cliff has a case of drugs. If I have a slow, I have a total of a shit in my chest. Tenders, which is more humble than most people. But no, that will take the chest to get to the
I currently live with my people. I think people need to understand that it's not always a choice. Like, I feel like people are almost getting looked down on. But a lot of us have jobs. A lot of us have multiple jobs. And we keep being like, we're not lazy.
Yeah, I believe we should all work in the office. We just take school. That's best to be good. What's our situation? That's a lot, man.
Do you have a good honor roll for first semester?
Yeah, honor roll. I would, I would reward from the Lord of Education.
It's really hard for me to find a job because I'm not really sick with cancer. I have diabetes. It's survival. And if we didn't, if we didn't have a massive condition, I'd be starving.
We're a doctor on that side.
But they want to shake this. I need to work here. Because you, very lonely. Very, very lonely world. And everybody feels like you're without me, you're absolute hopeless. And all of all the pain. And you can focus on the pain. Something that everybody can't understand. And after a year of like, not making two weeks of the weekend, like, you're sick of shit. People then come back and like, the first thing I'm brought to afterwards is like, an entire mountainside, people that have been neglected by the country for four years. And I'm in a room along with others. And I go, just sit there like. But why? Did I do all that?
So thank you for letting us share that with you.
Thank you, and thank you. And again, please indicate if you live in the city or the county. Or else.
My name is John Martin. I've been here 44 years. I live in Durango. Been riding mountain bikes and regular bikes all my life. So, item one, and this is a lighter subject than what we just watched, is that there aren't enough difference between e-bikes and regular mountain bikes to warrant keeping them off our trails. There are, however, plenty of reasons why mountain bikers and e-bikers should be in the same class of speed restrictions and courtesy restrictions as each other. There shouldn't be a difference between them. I have something as simple as this bell that I get a thank you from on every trail that I'm on. And it's a good start. I recommend it to most anybody. So on your left or with the bell, you'll let people know they're, that you're coming. I have heard from someone at Twin Buttes who said they had rude mountain bikers, run them off the trail. They thought they owned the trail. They weren't mountain bikers. They were just mountain bikers. So again, we need more rules. We need more signage, even on the River Trail, which Beth, excuse me, someone has told me there's a 15 mile an hour limit. I haven't actually seen a sign to that effect. So a few signs, maybe at Twin Buttes and the other trails, of courtesy counts. And, and maybe some one-way trails would be safer on the unsafe areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Lacey Enderly?
Can you stand right here? Hello, my name is Lacey Enderly. This is my son Matthew. We live in the city. I'm not a person of many words, rather of actions. So this is going to be short and sweet. I am a philanthropist with a degree in nonprofit management. I have been actively involved with our unhoused population for eight years. The reason being that Matthew is our adopted son, who was born to one of our local homeless ladies who resides at Purple Cliffs. We are, yeah, we are her, I am her legal caregiver. And she's one of the most loving people I've ever met. I have the experience and education to professionally establish and manage a safe outdoor space for the most vulnerable of our unhoused population, the families, seniors, veterans, and the disabled. My 501(c)(3) organization named CSU Incorporated will mirror the policies and procedures of the well-managed camp by CSS in Eugene, Oregon. My organization will seek to work in collaboration with the city to create a governance handbook for the residents of the space. I would like to hand over my soft introductory proposal and contact information with a goal to schedule a meeting for further discussion. As a community, we cannot solve the world's systemic problems of homelessness. However, I am confident that we can begin with one safe outdoor space for Durango's most vulnerable population in a professional, business-like manner. CSU Incorporated may be one possible solution to this problem. So am I allowed to pass a packet to you guys, or do I?
Yes, yes, you can. I have eight. Thank you for your time. Alan Markert? Markert? Markert, okay.
Good evening. My name's Alan Markert, and I'm wanting to talk in favor of Class 1 e-bikes on natural surface trails. I've been a resident here for about 10 years, and I own both regular e-bikes and, regular bikes and an e-bike. Liked using both of them. I was formerly from Texas, from San Antonio. There I was headed up a citizens council for development of natural surface trails alongside a very extensive linear park system that the city was implementing throughout the city. I've also participated in the Twin Buttes test of e-bikes. I've also done a lot of, some research and a lot of riding in Phoenix, where they have opened up e-bikes in their regional parks there. And just, just viewing the amount of e-bikes there, the popularity of it, they've been very successful in implementing that and having it shared with hikers and other bikers and joggers, runners, trail runners, even horse riders in those parks. The, I think the city probably has had enough time now and pretty good experience with e-bikes on their, on the River Trail, where I would think that the opportunity for conflicts between users is probably even, even more so, considerably more so than it would be on a natural surface trails. I don't think there's been very many problems with that. I had some friends from Texas recently come down to, come up, rather, I guess, to Durango to mountain bike here. And really, for the, for the reason, for one reason was because they could rent e-bikes here for some of the harder rides. One was so impressed with it that before he left town, he actually bought an e-bike for one of our local retailers and contributed $500 in sales tax money to the city. So I was happy to see that. Look, this is going to work. This, this, the plan, the e-bike plan on natural surface trails is going to work here for the same reason it has always worked in Durango. And that is where our willingness as users of these trails to, to share them with, you know, share them among all the users. And I don't think that's going to be any different here. My request tonight would be that, in, in, instead of doing this in sort of a piecemeal fashion, that the council consider a full, a plan for fully implementing e-bikes usage within all the city-owned, city-owned trails, maybe starting with horse coach. Develop a schedule, a plan over, that would implement those, implement the e-bikes on those trails over some, some period of time. With the caveat that the council could delay that plan if there's any significant problems that surfaced. And that gives everybody users, it moves the plan forward and allows people who still have concern about it to know that the council can, can stop, can slow it down. And at the same time, puts sort of the e-bike community on notice that they, they, they need to make this work in order to see this implemented. Thank you.
Jeff Sunderland?
Good evening, and thank you for your time today. I'm Jeff Sunderland. I live in and own a business in Three Springs. I serve on the Board of Directors at Manna and am the Missions and Outreach Coordinator at the Durango Vineyard Church. As the Outreach Coordinator, during the last four years, we've served our community with heaters for the unhoused program, which was focused around supplying enough heat for individuals to not lose life or limb during the coldest times of the year. During this time, I've seen a passion from, excuse me, from the city, county, nonprofits, and individuals to help those most vulnerable find their way into stability through a variety of support programs. I've been encouraged by the fulfillment of a number of goals set out in the city and county strategic plan on homelessness that created the navigation center, the use of joint use funds from the city and county to assist with basic needs, the opening of apartments focused on exiting people from homelessness, donations from our community, and the pursuit of a number of other state and federal grants that have made a difference here in Durango. Recent discussion with people living unhoused at the Purple Cliffs has been encouraging in that many people exiting the cliffs have applied for and/or are qualified for some sort of subsidized or permanent housing. For these efforts, I want to commend you all involved. Of course, finding housing that fits the needs is a huge challenge, and will leave many people waiting through the winter without housing. Let us commit as a community and as you, as elected officials, to continue serving these people with dignity and respect. We can do this by now deciding to do what you, as a council, have been unable to place one of the last pieces of the puzzle to exiting homelessness. This is ability to have a place to lay your head consistently at night while they work to overcome obstacles and take their next step. As we're late in the year with the winter quickly approaching and numerous joint city and county meetings have seemed to fail to produce a site, we are now stuck with the need for emergency action. In the absence of permanent solution, I believe it's necessary for the creation of at least one temporarily designated camping area with access to basic needs and a parking area for those that are living from their vehicles. Many of these individuals are now employed and helping with our workers shortage. With action, you can minimize the disruption in progress that is being made in the city and keep it moving forward. You have the ability to make this better and with, will yourselves sleep sound at night knowing that you are not the obstacle needing to be overcome by our unhoused friends. Thanks for your time.
Loretta Mousha?
Hello, my name's Loretta Mousha. I live here in the city. I've been here 24 years, and I'm a volunteer outreach worker, primarily with that risk youth. But it ends up being, you know, all the way up to the grandmas and the grandpas. So I'm delighted to do that. I want to say thank you to the city councilors, LaPlata County commissioners, and the entire community of Durango, a community I love dearly. My topic is Purple Cliffs and the unhoused. We have all struggled with the unhoused situation and living conditions of the unhoused community for many years, and it's not going to be tackled in one meeting, one month, or even one year. I want to share a quote from Alan Graham, and he's the founder and developer of Community First Village Austin, Texas. He states that the reason for the majority of people that find themselves homeless is a catastrophic loss of family. The community there in Austin has taken hundreds and hundreds of unhoused people off the streets of Austin, Texas over the past two decades. This is a model we should look at and learn the beginning steps to help our own unhoused community members. If each of us takes just a moment to close your eyes and to practice a sociological imagination of putting yourselves in the position of being homeless right now, it's a bit of a stretch, but try to imagine yourself walking out these doors this evening, and you only have a sleeping bag and a tent. You might, for a second, feel the grip of fear as you walk away into the night with no place to sleep except what you alone can scurry up in the darkness. I believe that's what the unhoused feel every night. Will they be safe? Will they be mugged, raped, or killed before the sun comes up? I believe in our community, our city, our county, and all of our community members to work together to come up with a regulated, managed camping area that allows the unhoused to feel secure so that they can begin to heal and become thriving members of this city and county. How do we eat an elephant? One bite at a time. There's plenty of brains and beauty right here in this room and right here in LaPlata County. I believe in the power of us. Let's do this. Thank you.
Joel Gertie?
Good evening, good evening, everyone. And thanks so much for everyone for showing up and showing such compassion this evening. It's awesome. My name's Joel, resident here in Durango. Also a community-based behavioral health provider. Been working in housing and homelessness for the past decade and currently one of the outreach workers out at Purple Cliffs amidst the impending displacement. So first off, let us recognize that displacement is trauma. And trauma is a full bodies, is a full body experience that can destabilize anyone. An experience where nothing is familiar, nowhere is allowed, where basic needs of sanitation and food are not a given, where your home can be washed away by the elements at any time. It's a fight for our survival, where our nervous system goes deeper into fight or flight, making it hard to sleep, to focus, to communicate, to regulate our emotions, to feel safe. Additionally, displacement makes it harder for me and other caseworkers to maintain crucial relationships and follow-ups with people to make it on to the next step in housing, benefits, and healthcare. This is one of the reasons why creating a new designated space for camping that is accessible to services and transportation is vital to ensure our ability as service providers to show up as best we can. An added perk is that by adding restroom and trash services is that we can curb some of the effects that so many neighbors fear, that people use the streets as a trash can and a toilet. Supplementing this with a designated safe parking area will also help our neighbors feel safe and ensure Durango's housed residents that random vehicles will not be parked in front of their house overnight. But let us not forget that many of our beloved colleagues who keep Main Street and restaurants alive by working two-plus jobs are some of the very neighbors that we are talking about right now. And though these low barrier and immediately implemented acts, we must continue to underscore that this is an emergency, and we should never have to find ourselves in this much of a crunch again. To do so, long-term strategies must be prioritized simultaneously as we begin to trust the research and implement a managed community. And by owning that we cannot assume that one size fits all for housing needs, we recognize that housing and healthcare are one in the same and also on a spectrum. We must honor where people are at, and as leaders, we must strive to ensure equitable access for all to leave a safe, to lead a safe existence. It is essential that we take these immediate steps to ensure that we say, we can, to ensure that we can truly say that we're a community that looks out for our own. Thank you.
Paula Adkin? Paula Adkin? Yes. Take that down. I'll announce for anyone else.
Thank you. I'm Paula, and I've lived in Durango. I think I just did it right, 71 years. Seen a lot of change and a lot of great things. I, very briefly today, would just like to mention that homelessness is a matter of public health. And very much so. And we are all, as human beings, we are all the public.
We did just put another sheet down there. So if those of you that have arrived late and still would like to speak, there is time to sign up, and we have not yet gone to virtual. So the next person to speak is Carolyn Hunter.
Good evening, city councilors. Can you hear me? Is it working? Okay. Carolyn Hunter, I've lived and worked here for 30 years. And I'd like to say, this is a difficult issue, but since it is nationwide, good, tested solutions already exist. I support the two actions in NINA's letter, the smaller, safe camping areas and the safe parking area. These are the simplest and quickest way to provide our neighbors a way out of homelessness. NINA's survey done in May this year shows that 18% of our local unhoused people are employed. More unhoused people could work their way out of this situation if they had a safe place to sleep, access to showers, and a safe place for their belongings while they work. This is the premise and success of the Housing First model, which helps people exit homelessness in an average of two months, with up to 91% remaining housed after a year. This is what I got off their website. The book 100 Story Home details the success in Charlotte, North Carolina. When basic needs are met, personal miracles happen. Many will also Many will also need to be within walking distance of their jobs since they don't have a car. Some of these safe areas will have to be in or quite near the city. A hotel night clerk employee will not be able to use public transit, and it's too expensive to expand existing routes. Over two-thirds of those surveyed have lived here more than two years. One-third have lived here more than six years. They have strong ties to Durango. Who else would stay here in the winter? They need these ties to transition back to a sustainable lifestyle. Only 6% of those surveyed moved to Durango because they heard of our services. Nina's two proposed actions create a win-win solution, providing safety for both our community and our unhoused neighbors. The key is the management of these sites. So Nina has already proposed a set of practices which protect both their residents and our community. With Purple Cliffs closing in 24 days, we are now in an emergency situation. It's time to walk our talk, to make decisions to protect both Durango and our unhoused neighbors. Inaction is not an option. Thank you.
My name is Robert Leeb. I live at 32 Coal Bank. I'm now a resident of the city of Durango after 44 years outside the city but in the community. About 50 years ago, I was living in California, and I was invited to a luncheon in Beverly Hills, California. And I was told that I was going to listen to a lady that was introducing her work with the poor and the homeless in her city. Well, I also got to meet her at a small little pre-luncheon meeting that was arranged by a friend of mine, and I was expecting something else than what I saw when she entered the room. She was a very short, small person, and she wasn't dressed very well. She had a kind of a shabby sweater on, but an immense amount of energy that came from her as she came into the room and greeted each of us. I have to say that that energy that she went through the rest of her life got her a Nobel Peace Prize. She was Mother Teresa of Calcutta, and meeting her is still one of the highlights of my life and a guiding light to some of the things I believe in and try to work for and work with. Her message at the luncheon in front of all these people who were there, dressed in their expensive clothing and surrounded by all the opulence of the city of Beverly Hills and this Beverly Hills Hotel that was full of chandeliers and all this stuff. You know, it was when she stated one thing that I have forgotten, she said that we can think of all of our accomplishments and believe we are doing great things, but if we are not helping the poorest of the poor, we have no soul, we have no heart. In Durango, we can look at all the wonderful things we have in our community, thanks to people like yourselves. We have great parks, great trails, great rec centers, downtown, great schools. The list goes on, great police department. But if we are not helping the poorest of the poor, we have no soul, we have no heart. And I'm not here to condemn those you have or have not done, but just to bring you that message that I think that's important and it should be part of what should be in the thoughts and processes as we decide how to deal with this problem, that I agree with the others, that it is an emergency.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Eric Everett. I'm 66. I'm a Durango resident. I'm here to speak about e-bikes, like lightweight frames, multi-selectable gears, front suspension, rear suspension, disc brakes, tubeless tires. All of these are embraced bicycle technologies. E-bikes are just part of that progress. Because of my knee and without pedal assist, I would be denied the ability to ride my bike on an otherwise public space. I might pass uphill slowly. I've been passed slowly uphill, and I always pull off to let the faster riders pass me downhill. Downhill is a function of brakes, not motors, and that's 50% of the discussion. If e-bikes are prohibited for reasons of trail health, then we must prohibit all competitive amateur and professional mountain bikers who ride aggressively. That would be ridiculous. The trail should be open to everyone. Anything other than open access to public trails is a discriminatory effect on older and/or disabled people and possibly a violation of ADA and other related laws.
Hello, my name is Karen Wallace. I landed in Durango in the 70s. I love this community. I retired as the assistant pastor of the Methodist Church, and currently I'm the community health advocate for Mercy Hospital with a focus on providing services for the underserved in the area of housing, food, mental health access, and spiritual care. Mother Teresa is a hero of mine, and another one is Paul Farmer. Paul Farmer was an infectious disease doctor who spent his life working towards health equity for the poorest of the poor, and I have a couple of quotes from him. Thank you for many of you who have had real practical suggestions. I come with more of a moral imperative. So Paul Farmer said, "In this increasingly interconnected world, we must understand that what happens to poor people is never divorced from the actions of the powerful." Another quote, "A decent provision for the poor is the true test of civilization. The idea that some lives matter less is the root of all that is wrong with the world." For me, an area of moral clarity is, you're in front of someone who's suffering and you have the tools at your disposal to alleviate that suffering or even eradicate it, and you act. That's what we're hoping will happen with this group. Another couple of quotes from other people. "The best test of a nation's righteousness is how it treats the poorest and most vulnerable in its midst." Americans are blessed with a great plenty. We are generous people, and I believe Durango is a generous community. I have seen over and over again people helped in this community. We're a generous people, and we have a moral obligation to assist those who are suffering from poverty, disease, war, and famine. And finally, I'll close with Gandhi, who everybody's familiar with. He said, "The seriousness with which a society takes justice can be gauged by how it treats its least empowered citizens." The poor are in this category. So I hope that all of us will spend a few minutes considering how we treat the unhoused. It's a strong reflection on us and our community. Thank you.
First of all, thank you guys for dealing with this situation. My name's Karen Pontius. I live at 288 Ennis View Drive. I've lived in Durango only about six years, but gotten involved in a lot of issues. Let's see. I speak today to support Neighbors in Need Alliance, or NINA. I've read the report by Project Moxy. It's called La Plata County 2022 Unhoused Count and Survey, and I recommend that to all who are interested, and you can read it at nindurango.org. I myself live in affordable housing, and I'm grateful for the city's help with our mobile home co-op, Ennis View Mobile Home Co-op, saving 120 households from uncertainty. The issue of homelessness is an issue with many causes and many solutions. It's a concern everywhere. It takes cooperation from all government entities to solve it. It takes money to provide housing, which, once you have housing, you can cycle out of as you gain independence. Housing First, which Caroline mentioned, is a concept that offers unconditional, permanent housing as quickly as possible to homeless people and other supportive services afterwards. There's a substantial base of evidence showing that Housing First is an effective solution to homelessness and a form of cost savings, as it also reduces the use of public services like hospitals, jails, and emergency shelters. If we'd begun Housing First 10 years ago, we'd be well on our way to good solutions. But since we didn't, I am here to support Nina's two asks: to amend the city's camping ordinance, which currently requires campers to pack up their belongings every morning, and replace it with an ordinance that allows for designated camping areas with access to portable toilets and garbage services, while more formal programs can be developed and implemented over the next six months. The second one is to work with the county to identify and establish at least one safe parking area near existing services where those living out of their vehicles may illegally park overnight. This area should have basic amenities, including portable toilets and garbage receptacles. So I urge you to please work with Nina and the La Plata County as partners to help solve this situation. Thank you.
I'll take a break. I'm just looking at Tom to see if he can get us back so that we are visual.
Just got to remember the password.
The next person set to speak is Peter Trigillis, but I saw that he stepped out. Has he?
He has another meeting.
Okay.
He could come and be in.
I'll come back and call at the very end if he's able to return. Thank you. We'll wait for the next one. If you'll come up to the microphone, though. Sharon Zimmerman. Am I reading this correctly? Looks like... They might have come up. Okay, we'll come back in case they've stepped out. Oh, for those of you outside, we do have two seats available if anyone would like to step inside. You're welcome to come in, and I believe there... Thank you. I'll call one more time. Sharon Zimmerman. Okay. Roy Malleed. Thank you.
My name's Roy Malleed. I'd like to start out with, I'm a resident here in Durango, and I'm a... Again, I've never done this before. I'm an honorably discharged veteran from the United States Army for six years. Last September, I came up with cancer and became homeless. I was brought out to Purple Cliffs for that and was greeted with some of the warmest people you've ever met in your lives. It would share everything with them. I've been through housing, trying to get housing, disability, and it takes time. Now I'm up to September. I just got approved of Section 8. I've applied for places, but I can't go nowhere. I have a Great Dane. It's my emotional support animal, and because of him, most of the people wouldn't even accept this because of the dog. I had to get psychiatric help to get them to sign paperwork saying that my dog is my emotional support animal. The stereotype that they give us all out there is just completely wrong. You know, everybody's everybody, and most of those people out there aren't junkies or whatever people think they are, man. It's not trash. A lot of it's created by city people themselves that come out to our camp. Okay? When we have dumpsters out there, the city, they bring stuff out, the county, city, all of them, and they dump it out there and expect us to take what we want, and then the rest we dump in a dumpster for them, I guess. I don't know. But it's not all our fault, but we get the blame for it. I'm just trying to say that I've never seen generosity in my life, and I've been around the world twice in the United States Army, South America and Europe, and I've never seen the generosity in my life that this community pours out for these people. And I think that you people should understand that we're not all the same out there, you know? And to think that a managed camp is going to be a fenced-in yard where you sleep next door and your neighbors this close to each other, that's not going to happen. Would you live in that? But right now, I'm forced to live up there in embarrassed amenities because of the indecision that's being told us that, you know, you could be leaving tomorrow, you could be leaving today. I've got all my worldly belongings that I have stashed up there in a tent, you know, and I run this cafe to recharge and help to, you know, make the community better up there, and all we get is bad reports. Nobody's ever come up and, "Stay with me for one day and see what it's like to be a homeless person." I've never been homeless before in my life, for the last year I've been there.
Thank you. Thank you, Roy. Okay, now we'll catch up to where we started, which will end up with Seth Furtney.
As you know, I am a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, have been for quite a while now, and I'll also be offering comment on the pedal-assist bicycle issue. I've attended dozens of meetings and spent hundreds of hours investigating this issue and consider myself relatively well-versed, and there are strong emotional positions relative to different types of bikers and bikers versus hikers and all this, but it's pretty rare that that leads to anybody dying, and yet that happens between bikes and cars pretty routinely, and we have some of those experiences recently. And I myself was run over on Hermosa Creek Road and spent about three months in a hospital and have a handful of replacement parts from being run over by a car. So avoiding that, I think, is to everybody's advantage, and fundamentally, I think the excluding pedal-assist bikers onto roads essentially introduces a fair bit of danger that no one's really recognizing, because bikes and cars don't get along so well unless you're really attentive. You had better recognize that you've got two, three tons of metal versus 150, 200 pounds. There's no competition. You know, one wins and one loses every time. As a member of the board, the board did recommend that city council change or rescind the city ordinance, which prohibits pedal-assist bicycles on the city trail system, and replace it with something that's more inclusive and biting. I support that and encourage you to do so holistically across all the city parks, Overland Mountain Park and Dallamont Park and Horse Gulch, because I think otherwise, you're picking and choosing if there is advantage to the community and to the safety of the residents in inviting them into those areas. Well, then let's do it, and then let staff figure out how to implement that, which very well may take years. We get that. You know, there's conservation easements, there's restrictions. It'll take a while, but I think doing that boldly and directly, one, sends a signal that it's something that people, pedal-assist riders are allowed to ride and enjoy their trails, and furthermore, it signals to BLM and Forest Service that this is our city preference. This is what we'd like you to do, and they will modify their policies to be complimentary. Whereas right now, they're following our lead and essentially told us, "We're not going to allow pedal-assist bikes on our trails because you don't." And I think we're in this kind of back and forth. If you do this on a park-by-park basis as a council, I think it's going to take a decade, and I think that's a challenge. I'd rather you make a policy recommendation to staff and let them do that in a couple of years. Takes a couple of three years, whatever it takes. If you do it park-by-park, it's going to take a decade, a dozen more meetings, tens of thousands of person-hours, and I think that's a waste of valuable resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Michael Payne.
My name's Mike Payne. I've been in the Four Corners for 40 years and Durango for 20 as a physician. and Durango for 20 as a physician. I came to speak about the pedal assist bikes and in favor of using them on all soft surfaces. But the stuff I was going to say after listening to this meeting is kind of funny because you have this one thing. You have all these people who are looking at unhoused people. You have this incredible problem that it's going to take years and takes so much resources, so much time. It's so important. But the e-bikes, and they have the e-bikes, and there's always all of us who came for that reason. But I think that, as Seth just said, you know, we know the answer. I mean, it's almost unloyed good, you know? There's almost nothing. I've never seen anything in any of the studies that say that e-bikes are a problem. From your point of view, I can't imagine how much work you have to put into all this stuff you're doing, dealing with this unhoused situation, Purple Cliffs. I think he has the right idea. You should just okay it in soft surfaces, let it go forward, and then have the option of stopping it if something doesn't work out or in certain places it doesn't work out. I think then you can spend your time on things like these other problems, you know, that we have all these people here for. And you wouldn't have, you know, 20 of us here spending 30 seconds of your time. Instead, you'd have one meeting about the things that really matter to the city and are much more difficult. I mean, and I've been to a couple of those meetings, too. And, you know, that's a lot of hours that you have to put in for this one problem. I think it's time to just finish it off. And you have every, you have all the ammunition you need for anybody who says, you know, "This is too soon or too quick" because all those studies, every one of them, says this is good for people. I think that's the way to go. So I'll shorten mine. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Sergio Verdusco? Sergio Verdusco? Verdico? Can't quite read the writing. All right, I'll come back later if someone enters. Let's see, we are now to Brian Blanchard.
Good evening, council and staff and attendees. Brian Blanchard, 785 Maine. I'm here in support of pickleball, something different. And I was at a working session earlier today with town council and really hard to watch. They struggled. They went back and forth. They're searching for the right answer to an issue that we've been searching for ourselves for coming up on seven years. We're asking for dedicated pickleball courts somewhere in the vicinity. It's a fast-growing sport, and we feel it's time to add that to our community. So in order to help the council a little bit, I just wanted to kind of breeze through a few things that may help them clarify and make a good decision about one of the two locations that they've identified so far, which are the Smiths Sports Complex up at the Fort Lewis College or Schneider Park, which is down by the Ninth Street Bridge. Both are great. We would take either one immediately. So I want to make that clear, that the pickleball community is in support of either one. However, having said that, I think there are advantages to the Smiths Sports Complex, and that would be things like issues that they have regarding pickleball and how it's played and the concerns about that. The average play of pickleball is early in the morning, eight to noon approximately. We've had some pushback from the soccer and the lacrosse folks up there at Smiths Sports Complex about conflicting with their time and issues that they have. We get that. But it is set aside as a Smiths Sports Complex, meaning not one sport, but multiple sports. So I think we need to keep that in mind. So the play would be early in the mornings until about noon, which basically takes care of the wind problem up there. I'm a tennis player also, and that's not a big deal if you play in the mornings. There's also high-tech noise and wind screens that are now produced because noise is a problem throughout the country. A lot of people don't like the pinging of pickleball. We get that. And I think the Smiths Sports Complex would be a better location than right downtown off of Rosa Avenue, which is a super busy street also. The other thing is parking. If you look at parking at Schneider, there are about 20-some parking spots right along the park itself. And then after that, you have to go all the way down across Ninth Street to the gravel area where all the rafts put in. So there's going to be competition on parking there with other entities and other folks in the community. Smiths Sports Complex has several hundred parking spots already paved and ready to go.
Mr. Blanchard, can you wrap it up? Your time is...
Okay, sorry. So Smiths Sports Complex also has bathrooms that Schneider Park, if you've ever been to Schneider Park, please go in the bathrooms, or please don't go in the bathrooms. They're scary. They have to be redone. That's going to be an expense on top of the, all the dirt work and everything that's going to have to go into Schneider Park. So to wrap it up, Schneider Park will cost about, with the bathrooms, minimal, a couple hundred thousand more than Smiths Complex. Smiths Complex is ready to go. Take the $200,000 that you'll save and put it to something else that you really need. That's our money. It's our tax money. Please use it in a good stewardship manner.
Thank you. Max Pusty?
Good evening. I'm going to talk about pickleball just for a little bit, kind of echo a few things that Brian said. I don't know if everyone's aware, but all the surrounding communities in this area have pickleball, outdoor pickleball, public facilities. Aztec, Bloomfield, Montrose. Farmington just opened up a beautiful outdoor pickleball facility for their community. Cortez has had outdoor public courts for years now and has a very good thing going over there. And Pagosa has a new complex under construction as we speak with a target completion date of this fall. So it's very common in this area to have public outdoor pickleball courts in the community. And as everybody knows here in the, in the city council after many years, you know, of a lot of time and effort and money spent, we finally have got some momentum, what I call momentum here in the town, to build ourselves some public outdoor pickleball courts. There's two options. And as Brian said, you know, they're both viable options. In the Southwest Community, Southwest Colorado Pickleball Association will support both of them or either of them. So my real message is simply, we just ask you, and I would encourage you just to stay focused because we've got this, finally got some momentum going towards these courts. So if you could just stay focused and not lose the momentum we've established, we'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Batya?
Hi, I'm Batya. I have lived in the area for some years. I do a lot of food justice work. I've done a lot of mutual aid in the community. I operate with the belief in solidarity, not charity. So you ask people what they need, and then you try to get it to them. You don't think of what may be your opinion on what might work is and then try to implement it without input from the community. That's something that I find really important. I want to talk about a, a piece of writing that the ACLU actually put out in 2018, I believe, about the situation in Durango. And it's called "A Year Without Sleep." I'm just going to read the first small section and the title of each section because from my experience in interacting with everyone in the community, nothing has changed that much. So it's called "A Year Without Sleep: The Criminalization of Sleep in Durango, Colorado." Criminalization of Sleep in Durango. "Many unhoused Durango residents have no choice but to sleep outside. Still, Durango police regularly wake unhoused people in the middle of the night and ticket them or force them to move on. The message from the city to these vulnerable residents is clear: homeless people are not welcome in the city limits. Many homeless residents of Durango have nowhere to sleep but outdoors. Durango enforces its camping ban against unhoused people who are simply sleeping in the middle of the night. In the officer's words, sleep is not permitted in Durango. Durango's policing of sleep leads to cruel and absurd interactions between officers and unhoused people. Sleep deprivation caused by camping ban enforcement is harmful to Durango's unhoused residents. Durango's camping ban enforcement is part of a larger effort to push unhoused people out of the city, and the city is failing to meet its legal and humanitarian obligations to unhoused residents. Again, in my experience, nothing much has changed. And I really believe that closing Purple Cliffs at the end of the month is incredibly cruel. It's about to be winter. If there's no plan in place for people, no one's going to be able to go anywhere. So I think that a lot of people are going to get arrested. A lot of progress people have made is going to be completely cut at the knees. It's really hard to get an ID, and you need an ID to access any kind of services. And being remotely stable is something that's really necessary for being able to engage with trying to build something. So I think that closing Purple Cliffs would be terrible. Thank you."
Adam Howell?
Yes? Yeah, my name's Adam Howell. I live on Av. Del Sol here in Durango. I'm here to talk to you about the staff's recommendations for amending the three conservation easements up in Horse Gulch. I serve on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. However, I'm not speaking on behalf of them right now, just to be clear. So Horse Gulch is a great place to allow access to Class 1 e-bikes for the purpose of allowing riders to connect to the Durango Mesa Park area. If anyone's not already familiar with it, Durango Mesa Park is planning on building a bike park up there, and they plan on allowing e-bikes up there. So it'd be a great place to allow for connectivity between the city and Durango Mesa Park. Horse Gulch is also the biggest or one of the biggest city open space areas in our area. So makes sense to have a big place for them to recreate, for those e-bike users to recreate. And then conservation easements cost money to amend. So in this case, we're talking about $3,000 for each individual conservation easement for a total of $9,000. What concerns me about amending these conservation easements just for Class 1 e-bikes is knowing that in the future, there's going to be other user groups who also want to use our open space areas, and we might be excluding them as well without having some other plan for including them. So I think we should have a plan for including them. And then the strategic plan, which is written on the rear wall of this room, mentions diversity, equity, and inclusion. I believe sincerely that e-bikes should be included on our open space areas. And I think we should consider the strategic plan as some, a document that should help include other user groups in our areas. That brings me to discrimination. What I think we have going on right now is a system of discrimination against Class 1 e-bikes on our open space areas. And then, as another speaker just mentioned, we also have a system of discrimination against people sleeping in our public places outside. What do I, how much time do I have? 20 seconds? Okay, so regionally, we've seen a lot of this discrimination occur, whether it's pickleballers being bullied up on by soccer players or lacrosse players or other types of discrimination. It's time that we, as a community, stop discriminating against other user groups based on feelings of discomfort. Okay, thank you for your time.
Adam, thank you. Has everyone who's in the room who wanted to speak signed up? If not, there's still... I'm sorry, I did, maybe I missed it. Brian, Brian. You know, I'm not seeing it on the list, but please come forward and stay... No, just, I believe you. I'm just not seeing right here on, in my listing.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, Mary.
Thank you.
It was very important for me to be here tonight. I'm glad to see some law enforcement. I hope you can hear me. Thank you. I'm in favor of pickleball, okay? I love e-bikes. I'm passionate about the plight of the homeless. I don't think as many people are here for that cause. I think they're more passionate about pickleball and things that are important to them. Do you see my black eye? A homeless man hit me with a hammer two nights ago. He's in custody. He's a frustrated man. That was a place that's dispersed camping where there, I understand a man commenting that they don't want to be housed close together. And, but 24/7 security was guaranteed to people who moved into the Aspero apartment community, but they didn't deliver. Nina will deliver. Nina will have 24/7 security at a managed planned camp. That's why I'm passionate about supporting them. I've had my own struggles, and I still help. I serve on the Connecting Council of Homelessness, okay? I was wrongfully ousted from Aspero while I had COVID twice, and I was very, very ill with diverticulitis. Some of you may know that. And still working on getting that judgment set aside, it was discrimination against my service dogs and a conspiracy that was unbelievable. Another man named Scott Saxon, he was kicked out because he wouldn't conspire against me. They had to finally pay him to leave because he hadn't done anything wrong. So I know that's a little bit unique to what other people are saying, but I think it's important that we say it. I'm here as an individual, as a citizen of Durango. I've been here for a couple of years. I know that the ACLU has called in before, and maybe they need to be called in again. But we're hoping to be able to do it without that. Maybe our mayor can help us with that. Maybe we need to, you know, talk about a state of emergency. "Over the holiday, I was attacked by a homeless man with a hammer. He was arrested, but that's rare. At Aspero, they don't prosecute people who are captured on video assaulting a 64-year-old petite female and the management gaslights in concert with others who are exploiting the homeless." I'm sorry, but this is true, okay? The homeless are not at fault all the time. The homeless have been abused by management who is not using trauma-informed communication. There are bullies. I have bruises from, you know, right now to show you, but it's not the homeless's fault. There are bad apples, just like there are with the e-bikes, people who don't have manners. People, but we need management who can control and set a good example for that. I would like to read to you.
And also, may, can you please wrap it up? We're coming up to the end of the three minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to leave you with this thought. It's a poem. "Living on the streets, going to the beach, sleeping in the forest with no home within their reach. Living in the shadows with people walking by, never really knowing how they got there, not understanding why. Fleeing domestic abuse or from jobs being let loose, sometimes a life of poverty feels like a hanging man's noose, condemned for no good reason. But dreading the hot or cold season, the stigma continues to grow, and no one wants to know as long as they have security. Many judge homeless as impurity. They worry and they fret, but humanity just doesn't get they could be your mother, they could be your sister, your father, and your friend. We share the same umbrella right up until the end. So seek to help the homeless and try to bring good cheer to those who have lost shelter and often live in fear. No man may regard as nonexistent the suffering from which he spared..." No man may regard as nonexistent the suffering from which he spares himself the sight. The struggling will be difficult, but it will be worth the fight. The sun will come out tomorrow. Bet your bottom dollar, there'll be sun. The times may seem unbearable, but you aren't the only one who wakes up in the morning as the sun begins to glow. There's someone cleaning up to play life like they're starring in the show. Not sure where life will take them or where they ought to go. It said, God knows what we need before we need it if we begin to pray. Yes, life is difficult, so be an angel for someone today.
Thank you, Melinda.
Thank you.
Is there anyone virtually who's raised their hand to speak?
Yes, Mayor. First up, we have Durango Trails.
Thank you, Council. Council, and special thanks to Mr. Lee. My daughter shares Mother Teresa's birthday and compassion is essential to the breadth of decisions the council has to make every day. Also, special thanks to the Parks and Rec and Natural Lands Board for their time spent on e-bikes and for your time today. Whichever proposal the city council adopts and decides to move forward with, one thing that would be beneficial for everyone is to make an extra effort to be specific on language, to be sure the terms pedal assist category 1 e-bikes are used. In addition, John and Ray's point about education and trail planning can help alleviate the real or perceived conflicts. Lastly, we would like to encourage that the Parks and Rec Department undertake a trail-specific master plan in order to align with the Durango Trails Master Plan and to develop a comprehensive city trails plan to more effectively ride to the ride, walk to the walk, and create a cohesive multimodal plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else virtually who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor. Next, we have Harrison Wenck.
Hello, Council. My name is Harrison. I am a resident of Durango. I am reaching out to you and I'm calling for immediate action from the city council in regards to the closure of Purple Cliffs and the upcoming displacement of many of our unhoused neighbors. As a young person living in Durango, I am only one emergency away from being in the same situation. I know many of you, and I know that many of you would hate to see that happen to me, but we see it happen to so many of our neighbors. I'm asking that the city please amend the city's camping ordinance, allowing camps or campers to pack up their belongings every morning and replace it with an ordinance that allows for designated camping areas with access to portable toilets and garbage services. And then also just asking the city to continue their work with the county to identify and establish at least one safe parking area near existing services where those living out of their vehicles may legally park overnight. I I don't have anything else. I just would really ask that each and every one of you take this in, take it personally. See that these unhoused neighbors need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. Anyone else virtually who's signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor. Next, we have Matt Lynn.
Good evening, Council. My name is Matt Lynn, and I work with Project Moxie. I've worked in the community for the past couple of years with the unhoused in partnership primarily with Neighbors in Need Alliance. Shortly following the delivery of a petition to City Hall last week, which has to date amassed close to 550 signatures, the city and county released a joint press release on the status of work being done at Purple Cliffs. The release begins by stating that there are, quote, "limits to what can be done locally", given that homelessness is a national problem, as if to suggest that we're calling for an overnight fix to a deeply rooted systemic issue. So for the sake of clarity, we are calling on the city of Durango to treat this specific situation, which is a mass displacement event of upwards of 100 people, as an emergency. And as such, to implement meaningful emergency responses, including one or more designated camping sites as well as a safe parking site, so people don't freeze to death this winter. Can you imagine, for a moment, if a wildfire displaced 100 people from their homes and the city and county put out a joint press release stating that there were limits to what can be done locally to mitigate the effects of climate change because it's causing an increase in fires across the country? That wildfires are a growing national problem and we could activate the fire department and turn on the hoses, but ultimately that would just be treating symptoms of a larger systemic issue. Frankly, Council, I'm hard pressed to see many meaningful differences between these two scenarios. Aside from the fact that the people in the hypothetical scenario involving a wildfire are presumably less poor. And so the news release also claims that there's limited resources for solutions at a time when we stand to see historically unprecedented levels of state and federal aid for homelessness mitigation. Designating areas for people to safely rest and camp and park while long-term strategic plans are hammered out doesn't actually require significant resources. And as you've seen this evening, you actually have willing partners in the wings ready to help. So I don't believe that we're asking for a lot here, but we do need your help. People you serve are at risk of losing their lives in the coming months as they try to survive a winter without shelter. And we simply don't have the available units at Durango to house 100 people, let alone units that are within reach for those residing at Purple Cliffs. And so in the midst of this emergency, while we hopefully make progress on longer-term strategies, we need some designated safe areas for people to go. As recently as last week, an email from the city manager indicated that the city views this as primarily a county problem, given that Purple Cliffs is on county land. I hope that we can set aside this shirking of responsibility and we can all agree that the closure of Purple Cliffs is a community problem and a community emergency. And so tonight, we can only ask that you have the courage to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Mayor?
Has anyone else virtually raised their hand?
Yes, we have Jen Lopez.
Hi, Council and Mayor. I'm with you tonight remotely because I'm in Denver. You all know me. I've had the pleasure of working with you all for years. I appreciate your commitment to housing. I do have to challenge you tonight, and I'm wearing a different hat. I'm wearing a hat as a policymaker that works on solving homelessness. I have unique experiences. I was the first director of homelessness for the state of Colorado under Governor Hickenlooper. What I learned in my, in my time working for Governor Hickenlooper was the cost of doing nothing for homelessness is not nothing. The cost of homelessness is extreme. The, the statistics say the communities are spending anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000 per unhoused individual. And I just want to point this out as a policymaker. The best policy is to use our limited resources and to get solutions done. And those solutions benefit the most people in our community. So what we're, what I'm really asking tonight and pointing out is that if we partner, there's a number of us in the community that have put out ideas for managed camps and safe parking and even some motel programs. We have solutions. We're ready to go. We can't implement any of those solutions without the city being a partner with us. So with limited resources and we're paying for the, you know, I, I think about our law enforcement. I worry about safety. I worked on the homeless plan in 2019 and we completed it in 20. It was a very difficult process between housed and unhoused in Durango. But the one thing everybody agreed on was we want Durango to be a safe place to live for everyone. This, not coming together, not having a coherent plan as a community, and I mean city, county, nonprofits, we are, we are making bad policy here and we're going to pay for it. I've, I've had conversations with law enforcement. They are very concerned at how much time they're going to be spending over the next couple of months, citing people, moving people. I want our law enforcement to take care of crime. So again, not acting or not being transparent about the plans makes it really difficult for us to jump into solutions. It is a really hard time to be an elected official. I appreciate all of your service so much. There's not one community that we work with that isn't dealing with homelessness. This is the new reality in America. This is an issue around affordable housing. It's not going to be solved overnight. But there's $105 million that will be rolling out in a few months. Our team's working with Manna, Nina, and others to figure out how we bring those resources to the community. We had fundraising meetings in Denver this week. Funders are very, very interested in helping immediately provide alternatives as Purple Cliffs is winding down. When they ask us, well, you know, what's the city's role or what's going to happen? We can't answer that. So it's really making it difficult for our team to, to move forward and make sure that people have a place to go in a few weeks. You all are amazing. I know you've got a solution, but you gotta share it with us or we can't get this done. Our team has asked a few different times, can we sit down at the table together? Can we have some community conversations so we can work together and get this done? Please let us know. We're on standby. Resources are there and we can do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Yes, we have Louise.
Yes, hello. My name's Marty Schuler. Can you hear me? Yes. Yes. I live on the new segment of the ART North Trail. And so I have a couple of comments to make about e-bikes. Number one, I've been open-minded about it. But from my experience, the last two summers, there's been a lot of illegal use of, like, there's, there's, it's not just Class 1 e-bikes. Typically, they start in the evening and there's a number of them. Now they're kind of reaching into the day. You can hear them coming from quite a ways away, so it is kind of a noise disturbance. But my concern is about management, you know, so if you do approve this on all our natural surface trails, how actually are you going to police that? Because there is no policing on this. They do it regularly. These, these Class 2 or Class 3, I'm not totally educated about e-bikes, but they're going at least 25 miles an hour, if not more, and whipping through here. So I do, you know, my heart goes out to the people that are walking because quite a few people walk in the evenings. So I just wanted to bring that up because I, I think you need a management plan in place, if you're going to approve it, to actually have some kind of effective control, not just talk about it, but management of people that are breaking the rules. The second issue, and I'll make this brief, but I've spoken a number of times to Council about my concern about the conservation efforts around town not being represented. You know, we live in a very beautiful area. I've lived here since I was four years old. I've seen degradation of beautiful wilderness, including along the river, wherever people are allowed. Well, the Natural Lands Board has a phenomenal group of people that are very educated in this. It's non-sustainable, the way that we are destroying our wilderness, and I think that there's so many aspects of it that people do come here, they like to float the river because it's almost like being up in the mountains. You know, that in the riparian zone, it's getting trampled to death. I think there needs to be a very concerted effort by city council to protect that zone. I know there's, there's lip service to it, but nobody really does it. As far as e-bikes, you know, it will increase the number of people that are going further and farther up in the mountains. And yes, with, from my experience, and I had a completely open mind, you can hear e-bikes coming from a long ways away. At night, they have a very large headlight, much like a car headlight that shines into your yard. There's no mistaking that it's a motorized vehicle. So I just wanted to give you my input on that and hopefully it's helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. May I remind the host to please start the timer when any speaker does start? Thank you. Anyone else who has signed their hand virtually, raised their hand virtually?
That appears to be everyone.
Has everyone who signed up here been able to speak? I'm looking at if anyone's returned that I might have called their name. I want to remind you, we are going to immediately go into an update from the city manager on the issue of unhoused in this community. So thank you for coming out tonight for all of the issues, e-bike, pickleball, unhoused. And yes, we do spend a lot of time looking at these issues and, and I hope that you'll appreciate that. I think every counselor brings their best intentions to their work. We may not all agree, but I think that we're united in trying to solve problems in a, with the best of intentions. I'll turn it over to the city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a cross-functional team that we've established on the unhoused issue to do a presentation. This was in the works and we've kind of had to modify it a little bit as we've gone through. Obviously, this is a, a conversation that's going in the community in which we're hearing from a lot of different sides and a lot of different opinions. It is something from a, a staff that we are taking very seriously. We definitely want to be partners, to be part of the solution. But we also know that there are times, there's times where we've been called upon to look at opportunities and we're hearing from both sides and it can be a very difficult situation. That's not a part to shirk the responsibility. It really is just talking about the struggle that I think when we look at hard-hitting issues within the community, that they're very difficult to come through. As we look at this, and you know, this was something that the county notified us in June, that Purple Cliffs was closing. So, you know, I know that you look at that timeframe. That's still a pretty quick timeframe from where we've had to try to pivot and see what solutions that are out there and look at some of the efforts that we have undertaken and knowing that there's always still more work to do. And we'll continue to, to do so. But part of this presentation was really a, a part of where we've had people ask in regards to some recent articles, some recent comments about, you know, what is the city doing? What are some of the things we have been doing? What are some of the conversations and updates that we have from our weekly updating, update meetings with the county? Which the mayor and I do have another one tomorrow, which I believe even after this has brought some other items that we can discuss with some of the groups that are looking to, to help. And we can have those discussions with Commissioner Norton and County Manager Chuck Stevens. And also talk a little bit about, you know, what it is that we're looking at and trying to maybe dispel some of the myths that are out there in the community in regards to enforcement. That has been a one that I think that we've received a lot of emails from, from the community. Some members of the community, I wouldn't want to personalize all the community of what are we going to do to enforce our ordinances and are we enforcing our ordinances? So with that, I'll pass it to staff to do a update informational, informational presentation on kind of what we're doing from the city, updates on how we're working with the county. And then also just being able to answer hopefully some of the questions that we have come through via emails and discussions.
Hello, Council. My name's Bryce Current, Durango Police Department.
I am Luke Alvey Henderson, representing the library.
And we're part of a cross-functional team that helps us put the citizens first by encouraging effective communication with members closest to these complex problems. Also, part of the team is Steve Barkley with Code Enforcement, Scott Shine with Community Development, Tom Sluse with Media and Community Engagement, and Turi Nycom with Parks and Recreation.
So we wanted to start tonight by talking about the city focus because of course, as Jose has said, it, there's been a lot of questions about what that focus is. And we really want to incur, you know, reiterate that we will continue to dedicate staff and resources to mitigate homelessness. And we want to focus on where we've seen success, which is creating permanent and supportive housing. And again, you know, this is a complex national issue and we're looking from support from all centers. We're looking for public, private, and nonprofit. We've done that in the past and we want to continue to do that in the future. So we're actively partnering to find better approaches to manage homelessness and methods that solve underlying problems that people do not have a safe or healthy place to live. And we underline those words because we're really looking at causes, not just symptoms. And we're looking at disallowing short-term management. disallowing short-term management approaches that don't mitigate the negative community impacts on homelessness, both for the community and the homeless population itself. We also recognize that many national best practices are pointing towards creating permanent and supportive housing and shifting away from emergency transitional housing, especially from low barrier camps. So when we talk about our history with creative, sorry, creating permanent and supportive housing, of course, we talk about what we've done with some of our key partners in providing land and funding and collaboration. And that's of course Volunteers of America, Espero Housing, Loomin Housing, the Manasuit Kipchen, and our Best Western Project. Well, not our Best Western, the Best Western Project. Of course, the Purple Cliffs closure certainly complicates all our efforts. La Plata County closing the Purple Cliffs on September 30th, that is the date we are given. But we want to give you an update about what's currently happening as the best information we have at the time. So of course, we all are very familiar with the Nina Project Moxie survey of upwards of 300 residents. Last count is Friday, September 2nd, that's down to 82. Of course, the question is, where are they? We have seen some of them leaving the community and I'll address in a minute where we're seeing some others go. And then there's of course the always, we don't know yet. But one of the things we're doing right now is the county was able to get through Project Manna additional workers. There are three full-time employees at Manna working on triage every single day. At the last coordinating council on homeless meeting, we saw San Juan Basin Public Health agree to go at least once a week. We saw Moxie and Nina and several other groups step up or double even some of their weekly visits. So we're seeing a lot of that triage and it's having some immediate effects. One of the most important effects is that the county, the city, and all our partners, of course, are focusing on the families and the children first. Six families have already been placed in hotels and they're working with a number of agencies on finding supportive permanent housing. That includes Manna, Project Moxie, La Plata County Collaborative Management Program, Housing Solutions, and more. So it shows you with just six families having to go through that many agencies, many complications every single time, but there is a focus there. Now, as of the last number we got, as of just Friday, again, there are currently 10 children remaining from three separate families. And that is the priority to find them temporary to supportive housing before the closure. And you know, the groups I've talked to say they're confident that they will meet that goal and we very much hope they do. So we addressed, you know, we have seen some people leaving the community altogether, but we also see some movement towards tech center. So Tim Sarbit was directly right at that at the last council meeting I went to. And that is again county property. For those of you guys who don't know, that means it's county who will police or look at that property. And so we'll continue to do zone look at, I'm sorry, drone flyovers to get a good count of the camp. We'll continue to monitor the neighborhoods to make sure that the passages through those are safe or all involved. And we'll continue to be looking at where other populations are happening so that, you know, hopefully they can get supportive services and hopefully the mitigation to negative public effects can also be reached. And we're going to do that through a number of methods that we'll talk about later. One thing that we found very surprising is that there was actually a 60% decrease in illegal camps in the city of Durango in the month of August, which seems counterintuitive. But again, we continue to follow trends on a month by month basis and watch for movements to see where they're going. So we do partner with the county on this, you know, we're not shirking the duty, saying this is a county issue, we're working with them. We have weekly meetings with county officials. We've discussed many possible locations of managed camp outside of the city limits. We've worked on that, trying to whittle that down and solve that problem. And you know, we are also recognizing how that we have to protect downtown and cities' open space, parks, and trails, you know, so that they're usable by everyone. We have offered a city-owned parcel outside the similar city limits for a possible location for a managed camp. But you know, we're not looking at that as a silver bullet. You know, we look at the Nina survey with Project Moxie and upwards of 53% said they were not favorable to or possibly would use a managed camp. So we do know that even with the managed camp, that's half the population of the county that we're not serving. So that is not the only solution to the problem. And then I'll give it to Bryce about enforcement.
Thank you, Luke. Counsel, we're going to shift gears just a little bit, talk a little bit about some of the questions from the citizens in reference to ordinances and enforcement and also answer some of the questions from some of the items we heard today. At Durango PD, we balance compassion with accountability by working with city parts, partners such as the Navigation Center, Volunteers of America, churches, advocacy groups, social workers, medical staff, homeless citizens, housed citizens, and homeless councils. And many of those individuals are here today, see a lot of familiar faces. If you only have accountability, you'll grind people down and they won't get up. If you only have compassion, you'll get chaos. And enforcement to the public, it often seems like we either do too much or not enough every time. We network currently with the Volunteers of America Shelter and the Navigation Center to check on available beds before enforcement. Usually the beds are available. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the rumors versus the reality and the questions that were asked often in the, in the community about some of the, some of the legalities of what we can and can't do and what we should and shouldn't do. Number one is, is it illegal to panhandle? No, it's not illegal to panhandle. It's, you're not allowed to aggressively panhandle and we'll talk a little bit about that here in a minute. Is it illegal to be drunk? No, in Colorado, it's not illegal to be drunk. And, and I think something that will help the community members differentiating between the two, and we heard it today about sleeping, to separate statuses from offenses and being drunk would be more of a status. Sleeping is a status and then trespassing is an offense. So why can't the, why can't the PD take them all to jail? And that question, they're talking about people that we're citing, that we're writing citations to. Most violations, if you think about it, a moving violation in a vehicle or a trespass or even damaging property, there's, most violations don't meet an arrest protocol. However, we are working on precision policing where multiple citations are issued to one individual, where we can get some, some jail time for the low level offenses and try to disrupt that behavior. And we're going to talk about the percentages of individuals we're actually talking about here shortly as well. So why can't you just bust them away? It's interesting. You get that question a lot. Number one, it's not ethical to remove our problems here in the city and put them somewhere else. But the, the legal parameters behind it are unless it's consensual, it's basically kidnapping. You can't grab somebody and put them on a bus and move them. And then there's another one that's a little more nuanced is why can't we just move them along? I don't know how many people have heard that, but we hear it all the time. And probably one of the most common examples would be at a grocery store or a, or a business. We get there, we arrive, we get the call and they say, why can't you just move this person along? Well, I don't like to be moved along. And I don't think it's, it's legal for us. We have to have a legal purpose or a lawful action to do anything. And we can't just move people along. And so a lot of those business owners, they need to know and we educate them all the time that they need to trespass those individuals or tell them to leave. The business actually has to tell these individuals to leave if they don't want them there for, for whatever purpose. And then if they're trespassing, then that's a legal action that we can, we can affect. And we try to educate people to that as well. Another, another issue is is throwing things away. Some people thinks people's items look like trash or maybe trash to one person and not to another. People have a right to their, to their things. And personal belongings must go through an abandonment period legally as well, as well. So a lot of people wonder why we can't just throw things away and that's, that's the answer to that as well. There's more rumor and we heard a little bit of this today from a gentleman that was up here earlier saying purple, Purple Cliffs is causing all the problems or a specific group is causing all the problems. And I like to hear from the chief every now and then he, he's really big on not grouping people in, in specific groups and, and that those individual groups, homelessness is such a complex problem. Humans are complex individuals. And nobody wants to be put in a group and our numbers do not show that. So 0.5% of the population causes 99.5% of our nuisance or disorder crimes. So out of our current top five offenders currently right now that we keep track of on low level crime, four out of the five do not reside at Purple Cliffs. And the vast majority of the unhoused are not breaking the law. Our enforcement efforts are focused on those that are causing harm. And we're going to try to make with the, with the precision policing models that we're trying to partner with the judges and the DA's office and everybody right now with. We currently are having meetings, ongoing meetings. And to that effect, we're actually, everybody agrees on all sides in the direction we need to go to, to mitigate and keep less cases from coming through and to intervene early and often. So we're going to switch a little again and talk about specific city ordinances and answer some questions here. So we enforce behaviors, not status. And I'm going to say that again, two slides from now. We have a culture of starting to offer aid before offering or offering enforcement. I guess we don't offer enforcement. Before we enforce laws. So here's some specific city ordinances. So pedestrians cannot remain in the medians for the purpose of pandering. The hours of operation in Durango parks are from 5:00 AM to midnight. Durango has 39 parks, playgrounds, recreation facilities, parking lots, facilities owned or managed by the city. And it's awesome. Prohibited acts in the parks such as trash, and these aren't, this is not completely limited to these, but dumping trash, disturbing the peace, swimming, bathing, animal issues, fires, throwing rocks, abusive language, et cetera. And we also have a disturbing the peace. Open consumption of alcohol, marijuana, and drugs. Aggressive panhandling or panhandling that impedes or slows the progress of other people. Sexual acts, whether simulated or actual. Maintaining a nuisance and or unreasonable noise. Malicious destruction of property. Obstruction, public streets, places, or buildings. So again, we enforce behaviors, not status. And I articulated the difference between some of those. And we have a culture of offering aid before enforcement. So sitting or kneeling, reclining or laying down in the downtown business area on any service or public right of way between the hours of 7:00 AM and 2:30 AM. Voluntary compliance is sought first by officers unless the person continues to engage. And that's actually written in the word. Occupancy of certain motor vehicles on public right of way. It is unlawful to occupy a vehicle for the purpose of camping on any street, public right of way, or city-owned or managed parking lot within the city. And obscene conduct, it's unlawful for any person to urinate or defecate in public view, whether in or on public property, unless in a bathroom. So trespassing, and this is one of the ones we we probably see the most. So as far as the city, it's unlawful to camp or shelter in parks, playgrounds, recreational facilities, parking lots owned by the city. That includes the Animus River Trail, all properties adjacent to the River Trail, open spaces, natural surface trails, city-owned or managed trails or hard surfaces, areas surrounding the adjacent city-owned buildings, public streets, sidewalks, or public right of way, city-owned parking lots as well. Now, the PD partners with businesses, many of them sign a private property enforcement letter, which allows us to apply the trespassing violations after operating hours. However, during operating hours, if there is a trespass, like I said, sometimes they'll want us to come there and move somebody along, which is a status of being in a, being in a place is a status. And so they want us to move somebody in on a status offense, which we won't. And, but if they tell them to leave during that time, even if we have a private property enforcement letter, we're not going to enforce that unless they're telling the person to leave and that we're operating under trespass. And that's on private property.
So we wanted to talk about what we're doing currently, which will lead hopefully to future efforts as well. One of the things we're doing immediately is a de-escalation training next week for all city employees. That's going to be with Axis Health and the police department. And we want to have that so people have as most positive interactions as they can if there is a larger amount of unhoused coming into public facilities. I can say at the library, we don't have a cap on unhoused patrons. Anyone who follows the rules can stay as long as they want that we are open and we are very welcoming to them. And we want to continue that. But you know, you are going to see some behavior issues and mental health crises. And so we want to get these trainings so that we at the library and other public facing city entities can see, okay, this is a mental health issue. This is an aggression. This isn't something I need to call the police on. I can use these simple strategies to try to calm it down. Or even if it is aggression, it is something for the police, maybe I can calm it down. By the time the police get here, we've resolved a lot of the issue. And we hope that will not just help, of course, with the unhoused population, but all populations. You know, because anyone can have these things. And so we, we hope that's a real boon and we hope it leads to future trainings as well. The city is also developing a reporting app for areas of concern. And this is not a euphemism for, okay, let's only use it for unhoused individuals. It's also for fire mitigation. It's also for potholes. You know, it's high time we had an app where you can just take an image and it geotags it. So there can be immediate response from code enforcement. And this is not just a course for the well-being of all the public, but also the unhoused individuals themselves, if they find themselves in unsafe situations. We're looking for additional code enforcement officers. Again, this is not just for an immediate crisis, but ongoing. We feel like it's, they are the first line of finding issues that can lead to greater problems, especially with fire mitigation and other issues that lead to serious devastation of our community. That's where they're on the front lines for. You know, Bryce talked about the partnership with the DA and the courts using up-to-date data, precision policing and prosecution models. You know, we really hope to see that make a huge effect. So, you know, some of these people who are offenders, you know, as we've seen, they're preying on the unhoused and we want to protect them from that. And you know, it can be difficult to do that. And we're working as hard as we can to change that enforcement strategy with the courts. And you know, we've seen that again and again, increased enforcement does yield results. And I know enforcement can feel like a really loaded and terrible word, but since we are every single time offering different versions of assistance, we're hoping that that is sometimes the 15 to 20 contacts that a lot of people in the new room know is the average amount it takes for an unhoused person to accept assistance. And so we hope that that leads to that. And we're also hoping to find more sobriety programs, treatment programs, caseworkers, et ceteras, coupled with the housing first model. So you know, we know that there's a great need for that here. And so we're very willing to partner with any group who thinks they can get a treatment center in Durango and you know, more, you know, addiction resources in Durango. We really want those long-term solutions as well. And you know, if you look at it, we absolutely see these housing first models in places like Utah and Albuquerque have reduced jail-related costs by more than 50%. We are absolutely dedicated to pursuing housing first models. And as Bryce has said, that doesn't mean that the officers won't enforce the laws on their own books, but of course they will. But they want to focus on, and we as a city want to focus on the root causes more directly. So we're decreasing the amount of fences, not increasing them. So in summary, what we've covered tonight and what we've heard, you know, we know we may not agree on the solutions together. But we hope that we can all acknowledge that there's a desire here to help. And we certainly hope that we can build on that together. And regardless of dissent, we really want to acknowledge and thank our key community partners, Manna, Homeless Outreach Team and Navigation Center, Neighbors in Need Alliance, Volunteers of America, the Coordinating Council on Homelessness, Axis Health and their co-responder team, the Women's Resource Senior, Housing Solutions, and Project Moxie. And thank each and every one of you who've come out tonight to lend your voices and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for the, the cross-discipline team working on this. I appreciate it all. City manager, I'm just going to open it up for questions from council. I will remind the public that we are now in an official city council, are moved into city council business. And so this is a discussion among the city council from the dais that while we have heard your comments, we will not be taking questions from the audience. Thank you. Questions of the city manager or others?
I'm going to just speak for a little bit. I, I think we always, I always bring forward, it's, you know, the start, the cause, mental health abuse, et cetera. How we help those people, people that lose their house and then go homeless, how to prevent that. And then we have the housing or the shelter, the camp. And then we have the pathway out if they're willing to, to go back into the, so there's several steps in that process. And I think one of the key topics is not, we're not talking so much about the first and the end part, but exactly the managed camp. And it's, I, and I say this during the joint county and city meetings, I think it's very disappointing how little progress we have made. Even though everybody else seemed to disagree during that meeting. Purple Cliff started what in 2018 or 2019 after the tech center? And we have nothing to show for except for that when in three weeks' time, it will be closing, and there's no way for these people to go anywhere. Except for some small quantity emergency solutions for a very specific group of people. I appreciate the presentation you gave. I I think we as a council put the police department in a very difficult situation, and the same for the county commissioners with the sheriff. As department, because you have to deal with this, but almost everything you've presented is about minor fixing or prevention of consequences. It's not much about the update on the actual campsite. We don't even have a clear understanding what campsite we're looking at. Is it the permanent managers campsite, or is the transitional campsite? Is it something with some sort of shelter buildings? So I just think I'll stop with saying, I think we need to do way better as a council and as county commissioners for that part.
As we all know, this is an incredibly complex problem. It's a problem for everyone involved. It's a challenge for everyone involved. And I I think it's incumbent upon each of us to suggest solutions and a direction to go and not just complain about what's happened in the past or what hasn't been accomplished. There was a mention in the presentation here that the city had offered a piece of city-owned land. It's not ideal. It's not perfect. But as many people have said, including Commissioner Norton, if we allow perfect to get in the way of doing something, then we'll never do anything. So one of the things that, you can tell I'm a little emotional, my voice is shaking, so I apologize for that, but the county, to my understanding, has not accepted or furthered the discussion of the property that the city has offered. And that makes it incredibly difficult for us to move forward. I think with the imminent closure of Purple Cliffs. We have seen, I have seen personally, and I know it's been borne out by statistics, that a lot of the people have been leaving that area and moving to other areas. Because they don't know what's going to happen, right? We have no certainty. There's no stability. So we need to take the lead and we need to designate the city-owned piece of property. It's not the solution. But it's an option that we can do right now. Because we need to then take the time to approach the other challenges in the right manner. There are mental health issues. There are social and human health issues that need to be addressed. We need funding for that. We need to figure out how to improve those aspects of dealing with homelessness. People don't just become homeless. They usually have issues that create that homelessness. And about fifty percent of it has to do with mental health and social services, which is also a county responsibility mandated by the state. But the city supports that. We we fund access mental health. We fund many other groups. We fund, as the present presenter has mentioned. We give land leases to Manna, VOA, Espero, Lumian, the Hilltop House. We make contributions in ways that aren't obvious, and there are significant contributions. But we do need to move forward now. Because when Purple Cliffs closes. I think I think it's not appropriate for the people who are living there not to have some certainty. I know I wouldn't like that, and I know that there are many reports that show people don't want to move to a managed camp, or maybe a managed camp isn't the answer. Maybe it's just a place for people to go to rest. I don't have the answers, but I do have some suggestions of what to explore, and I've mentioned a couple of them, but I think we need to do something, and I, this is not the forum to make the decision because it's not agendized that way, but somehow we're going to have to approach this problem.
Thank you. I think that was well said. I want to reiterate to the community that our staff is they are in the process right now of working hard with the county. These meetings that they have weekly, as as Jose suggested in the update, they are between the city manager and the county manager Chuck Stevens and our mayor and Marsha Porter Norton, and it's intentionally that way so that they can meet to try to sort through these difficult issues. As Councillor Baxter said, we've brought forth a location, a site as an option that is being considered, I believe, among several others. None of that is ready for primetime discussion yet, and I believe that this is, this is what the community is waiting for. I would love I would love to myself get an update on when we might be able to discuss and bring forward the locations, because then I think as a community, we can start triaging around coordination of care, transportation, how we can help. I think all of us up here want to see that. And we don't want to see Purple Cliffs close until that has been identified and in place so that we can set up some coordination of care, but this is a negotiation and this is, this is an issue that we are working on with the county and it's just taking time. And for us to, we just, I'm not in a position to share anything more than that, because honestly, I don't know. I'm not in those meetings. And so those meetings are happening as we speak each week, and that's kind of our update.
I'll just echo what Councillor Yusef and Baxter said. I totally agree, and thank you, Luke and Bryce. That was a great presentation, and it's good to see how everyone coming together, if that's like this immediate Purple Cliffs closure that none of us were expecting. If that's what came out of this is a team to really tackle and 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 all the issues, then that is a great step forward, I think. And so I appreciate all the key community partners that are working together. Thank you, everyone, for coming and speaking today. I think it's so great to hear everyone's, you know, opinions and passion and know that, you know, it's not just us sitting up here like trying to navigate this really tough problem, but there's lots of people that care and are willing to help, and I think that's what we're going to need to go forward. I think that the weekly meetings are great. It's hard to force a, you know, land transfer. It's hard to force a spot. It's hard to, you know, it's, it takes time. And hopefully, we can maybe buy a little time with the county potentially and and see how we can get there. But, you know, I'm hopeful too that we can move in the right direction quickly and move on potential land to, you know, we all want. We all want a solution and we all want to, you know, help. And so I think that that's super important to realize too.
I I will jump in. It's the last of the council to speak. First of all, thank you for coming out. Let me say that, yes, we have made a a spot available, and to Councillor Baxter's, it is not ideal. We have also been looking at other properties. And the city manager through his one-on-ones with the council keeps the council apprised of that to the best of his ability. We're not in a, without going into some discussion, we're not able to talk among ourselves about these items. So there is a, an effort to keep all of council apprised. You know, I'm not privy to those conversations, but I will say that it's hard to have nothing to say, but that doesn't mean that nothing is happening. You're just, you, you can't come out with like to the point of, here's what we're looking at because it's still in such a preliminary view of what's possible. But I do think that there is a firm commitment between the city and the county to address this. It's not to address all of homelessness in La Plata County. It is to address those folks at Purple Cliffs who will be affected by this closure and seriously affected by this closure. So that's one. I think we have to also recognize the success of having families placed in hotels, and that's something that came out of a conversation between council and the commissioners in in an open meeting, which is maybe we just need to get a series of hotel rooms so that children can be in a neighborhood, right, rather than in some camp that can be among other children. So I think you've heard the what, the issue we are also, I think, struggling the most with is who, what's, what's the size of the population we're working with and what are their needs? And that's what we're getting through the man of work that they are doing with the transition. Is it coming fast enough? No, but what we are hearing, I think, is is well thought out and thorough. So I wanted to without being able to disclose locations, possible locations, say that those conversations are taking place. Manager and the and the county manager are receiving direction from council on things to be pursuing. But we have nothing definitive right now to offer. That doesn't mean come in a week or two, things won't change. Because I will, and I would like to finally also address the action or inaction. Because, you know, Councillor Yusif has been on council longer than I have. She's dealt with this a couple of years. But we've all been dealing with it for at least a year and a half as this council. And so I think that we have to all accept that we've been making efforts and that part of it is also community will. And there's a strong contingent here tonight, and I appreciate you coming out. There's also a strong contingent saying, you know, not within downtown, not in this area, not in this area. So you have to probably see that we are hearing from multiple groups who all tend to think their their way may be the right or what we should be doing. But as a council, we are elected to serve the entire community and what we think is best for that. So I want to thank you. I I know Bob Lieb left, but I think his comments about Mother Teresa and honoring and recognizing that how we treat those with the least resources is a statement about how we are as a community, and I like to believe that Durango is the caring community that I chose to live in. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else to add? On the subject matter. We are now taking questions from I'm sorry? The presentation? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that we try to make those available. Thank you. On that note, we are going to move on to the next subject matter. And those of you that may want to depart will take a minute to allow that.
So what the heck happened?
Okay, so just a quick overview for familiarity. The project involves full repaving of the runway. So it's a three inch mill and overlay project of the asphalt surface of the runway, which is a 9,201 foot long by 150 foot wide surface, you can see on the screen here, as well as the mill and overlay of seven connector taxiways, the full replacement of the electrical lighting system for the airport runway, subsequent grooving of the asphalt and permanent pavement markings. The major impact of this project is that due to the fact that we obviously have one runway at the airport, this project will result in a 10 day closure to all fixed wing air traffic at DRO. That starts at midnight tonight and runs through 11:59 PM on Friday, September 16. So all told, that is a 10 day closure to all fixed wing traffic, most notably for the majority of the public. That involves no commercial airline traffic here in at DRO. We understand that has significant economic impact for the community. However, this project necessitates this type of effort to ensure that ongoing investment in the core infrastructure of the airport. Our runway is literally the lifeblood of the airport, and it requires ongoing maintenance like any asphalt surface effectively. Our team is prepared for this project for the better part of a year and a half. Project dates were established in September of 2021, the one year out from construction, and were shared with numerous stakeholders, starting with obvious airport stakeholders such as the airlines, and working out through the community over the course of the last year. So we stand today a few hours from the start of this closure. I feel like we've adequately notified the public relative to the impacts. And at this point, we're ready to focus on project execution for the next 10 days. We have a major partner in Four Corners Materials, which is a local entity who was the successful bidder on this project and will be the asphalt contractor leading the way. This entity has worked on numerous airport projects with great success. We have very good working relationships with them. They remain very committed to delivering this project on time. At this point, that's the number one question we receive on the project, which is how confident are you that the runway will be reopened on September 17? And I'll just repeat the same answer, which is we are very confident. We've worked very hard to design this project with significant contingency baked into the 10 day window to allow for expected operational impacts, such as minor weather and operational interruptions on that front. So we feel like we have the right team in place on our design, engineering and construction side to make sure we deliver this on time. Of course, if there were some unforeseen impacts, we would message those out to the public. But at this point, we remain very confident we'll be back open for all fixed wing operations on the 17th. So with that, I'll just open up to any questions. Yes, indeed. You know, every airport, of course, rehabilitates their runways. But we're seeing a significant push across the country, in particular because of an influx of federal investment in infrastructure through the Infrastructure Investment Job Act in late 2021.
Well, I just wanted to thank you so much for your coordination, for your you've just been really on this for a long time and your efforts all around it and for keeping us on track. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Tony. It's exciting.
Sorry, I always think you want to go last.
Good luck over the next couple of weeks. And yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I like that. I think it's very interesting, exciting, short term project, big bucks. So good.
And Tony, I just want to make a personal statement. A constituent who happens to be a friend of mine wrote and was all surprised that they weren't going to be able to fly when they wanted to. And I sent the note via the city manager. It ended up in your hands. And you wrote such a thoughtful and comprehensive response into all the thinking that went into the choice of this week, this coming week. So thank you. Thank you for your quick feedback to the community. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much. We certainly, just to close, we understand, as I mentioned, the huge economic and operational impact this has in our community. Obviously, we talked about the airlines, but the airport is a fulcrum for other activity as well. Very thankful, of course, that we don't currently see any major wildfire impacts in our community. That was a risk we understood. The reality is that our construction season, no matter when we tackle it, overlaps with some degree of fire danger in our community. Very grateful that at least as of today, we don't seem to have any current significant impacts on that front. But again, we coordinated with the Forest Service a year out to make sure they had contingency plans in place. And they do, just in case we did see impacts within the next 10 days. We're seeing interruptions to cargo facility or deliveries within our community over the next 10 days. The airlines we mentioned, emergency medical flight, with the exception of rotor traffic. So those impacts are pretty significant, and I think that the community will definitely feel some of those. But we're hoping everyone will hang with us for 10 days, and we won't have to do this type of work again for a decade plus.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Sarah Hill, but I wanted to check with the city manager. Did you want to give any preface to the parking study update? Oh, Sarah, please come on up.
Not too late for me to send this information as an email.
Send it now. Okay. That one's coming up soon. Share screen. Where am I? There we go. It's a sharing rate. Sorry. I judge everyone who does this. Which one? No. No. Share screen. I don't see mine. Oh, there it is. Okay. Be good. All right. So I just wanted to give you a really brief, high level update on where we are in the visioning process for the plan. Tom? How do I get rid of this? Okay. And then this is clicking. Okay. So as you all know, we've hired Walker consultants, and they have started the visioning or they've completed just recently the visioning phase of the Durango's Parking Future, which is our comprehensive parking plan. We wrapped the visioning phase up at the end of August, and we're moving into this direction phase. So based on feedback and an evaluation of our current parking program, Walker is developing some strategies for us to consider in this next phase. I wanted to give you guys just a really quick update on what we heard through the visioning process. We had an online survey up for about a month, and we had survey responses in both English and Spanish, and ended up with about 946 responses. We had two public open houses and a targeted stakeholder meeting with a number of community partners. And then we had a booth at the farmer's market. So with these 946 responses and all these touchpoints, Walker Consultants is developing their recommendations for moving forward. Just really quickly, I wanted to give you a little bit of information about what we heard from the survey. The vast majority of the respondents are local with 55% living in city limits and 38% being county residents. Interestingly, the visitor responses, about 84% of them did drive here. Sorry, Tony. 80% of the respondents were drivers of a personal vehicle. And if we kind of hone in a little bit more on the city residents, that decreases to 70%. And about one in five rely on bicycles. Any questions on this one? So just want to go over some of the key highlights that we heard. Walker is going to provide a little bit more of a nuanced analysis of the survey data. There it was a very thorough survey. So these are just some of the highlights that I wanted to pull for you. 88% said that it was convenient for them to find parking close to home. 61% said it's convenient to find parking close to work. Interestingly, 43% of business owners that responded to the survey said that they provide onsite parking for their employees. It was pretty evenly split between people who believe that location of parking is more important than the cost and those that disagree with that. One in four said that a covered parking space was important for them. And 82% think that parking should be available on a first come, first served basis. We had nearly 400 open ended comments. The vast majority of those were in reference to a parking garage. Most folks were in favor of a parking garage. And many of those pro garage comments were specifically to accommodate downtown employee parking. There were quite a few number or references to employee parking and the bump out program. And then some honorable mentions, pedestrian mall, need for better signage, need for more bike parking, parking at Oxbow Park and some trailheads, and need for EV enabled parking spaces. So based on this feedback and Walker's existing analysis, they've put together a range of potential strategies for us, and these are going to be presented next week at a community meeting. We'll be looking for stakeholder and community feedback on this initial draft assessment. That meeting is next Tuesday at 5:30 PM in the main mall, the FLC Center for In addition to providing feedback at that meeting, we'll also have an online opportunity for people to comment on a more detailed survey based on the responses that we received. And then Walker is going to refine the recommendations based on this input. And we're going to wrap up the directional phase with a presentation to city council on October 18th to get some feedback from you all. And then we'll move into the consensus building phase with presentations to the Multimile Advisory Board, a public forum, and then final draft to council. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions of Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah. Did the survey ask simple questions like, do you believe parking downtown is adequate?
Yes, there were, I can't remember how many questions there were, but there were some very simple kind of yes or no, strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree options. And a lot of those were on residential parking, downtown commercial parking. So yeah.
Since that is a whole topic, what was the, do you happen to know the responses? Do the surveys say we need more downtown parking, or do they say, no, eliminate it all with the bump outs?
We had 88%, we asked questions about convenience. 88% said that they didn't have a hard time residentially, and then 61% said that in their work environment, that it was easy. We had them identify different locations on maps where they live and work. So we have some detailed information about that that we can dig into a little bit deeper. Walker is going to be presenting the results of the survey at the public meeting next week.
Oh, okay. And are we going to see more of that study and the survey that was done?
Yeah, when they do their analysis, and we have that final draft of their survey analysis, I'll have that out to council.
Sarah, did you ask specific questions about parking at the transit center?
Not at the transit center, no.
You consider that a valuable question or an appropriate question to ask since that, particularly as it relates to downtown parking. You've got an option for a garage, but how many people are actually using the transit center? Do they know where to find it?
Yeah.
Et cetera.
What we did hear was that there was a lack of information and signage about what parking was available downtown. And we have our vacancy data. We can rely on the number of cars that are actually using those spots every day. That was part of our existing conditions analysis. So we know the practices. We know in reality like how much it's being used. We didn't ask specifically on the survey if they knew about the transit center as an option. But like I said, there was some feedback about people didn't really know what options were available downtown.
Thank you. You know, I just think that it's great to have the data, how little it's being used. But its perception is reality, and people don't even realize that there is a transit center and it's available for them, then their view is that there's, that parking may be an issue.
Right. I would say, you know, just kind of anecdotally during open house conversations and at the farmer's market, we would provide that education piece. Well, you know, the transit center is available. It is free on the weekends. It is free on the eve. That was news to most people that we spoke with. Thank you very much for working on this. I really look forward to the preliminary final draft. However, you say that with our study session, we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you, Sarah. Now, we will go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item 9. Can we have a reading of the consent agenda, please?
Adam, 7.1 and 7.2 are approval of minutes. 7.1 is approval of minutes of the city council study session from August 16, 2022. 7.2 is approval of the city council regular meeting of August 16, 2022. 7.3 is discussion and possible action regarding the appointments of the Assistant City Manager and 911 Communications Director and the Associated Budget Resolution for 2022. 7.4 is discussion and possible action regarding approval of a resolution amending the 2022 budget. 7.5 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Berg 356 adventure boundary investment to be held on September 20, 2022. 7.6 is a request for a public hearing to consider the Milton property preliminary plan development, also to be held on September 20, 2022.
Does any council member have an item or items to remove from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Bostens?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pratjen Musa?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozur.
Yes, thank you.
Mayor and council, if I may, just congratulations to Erin for being appointed to Assistant City Manager. And then also Zita, who's in the back to nine-one-one Communications Director, just big congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Jose, for not letting that go uncelebrated. So congratulations and get to work. Okay, public, we have public hearings. There are no hearings scheduled for this evening. We do have an introduction of ordinances. This is item eleven point one. And that will be Dirk.
I will take that, yes. Mayor, this item is a little unusual in that it first began its way through the process some time ago in two thousand nineteen. Council held a hearing as part of a development, Mountain Trace Two and Timber Trails Plan Development. Conceptual approval was granted at that time following a hearing and council voted to approve the abandonment of a portion of a roadway that would be required to finish this development for a number of reasons. The development final process was held up. It's now time to finalize that. So the ordinance has been prepared based on guidance and approval from council at the point of the original approval of this item. So this would be ordinance number oh, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight to abandon the portion of roadway that will be necessary to complete this subdivision.
Questions for the city attorney? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance oh, dash twenty twenty-two, dash twenty-eight.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Let's have the vote.
Councilor Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Beal?
Yes.
Councilor Bostens?
Yes.
Mayor Pratjen Musa?
Yes.
And Mayor Nozur?
Yes.
Okay, item. Terry, discussion and poss- oh, and Amy, discussion and possible action regarding e-bikes on natural surface trails.
Let's see, let me maximize this. I'm at Mayor, members of council, Terry Nijken Parks and Recreation Director with me tonight. I brought Amy Schwartzbacher, Natural Lands Manager, to talk about e-mountain bikes on our natural surface trail in our mountain parks. This has been an ongoing conversation for many years, as you know, starting back in two thousand sixteen, where we eventually got to the point where we allowed class one and class two e-bikes on our Animus River Trail and Hard Surface Trail System progressed. And we allowed e-bikes at, at Twin Buttes Natural Trail System. And now we're talking about the three remaining areas tonight. So Amy is going to go ahead and give some background information and I'll step back in and finish up the presentation. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Amy to start us off.
So in the interest of keeping it quick, our summaries here are following on the heels of our presentation from just a couple of weeks ago. Thank you for bringing us back. As Terry mentioned, that our process started back in two thousand sixteen with a focus on hard surface. By two thousand nineteen, we were fully focused on our natural surface trail systems. Between Advisory Board meetings, public engagement, trial period planning, we as a community and staff took on a very thorough process. We had lots of takeaway pieces of information learned through these years of this process. Those being conservation easements on city-owned lands would require amendment in order to allow e-bike use. Our Durango residents have mixed views on this topic. Our Advisory Board members have mixed views on this topic. We also know that the Durango Mesa Park planning will include e-bikes in it in the future. And we know that our Federal Land Management Agency neighbors, either immediately adjacent or in the region, their e-bike policies are beholden to National Environmental Protection Act. So the NEPA process is, is part of what they would need to go through. Looking at our accomplished, again, this is a summary that we told you a little bit about last time we were in here. But after Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Multimodal Advisory Board, Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board met the joint, that was the Joint Board, they decided to form a joint subcommittee. That subcommittee met several more times. And through that process, they asked staff to absolutely confirm whether or not an amendment to any of the conservation easements required. The answer there was yes. And then each Advisory Board representative, there were actually three board representatives on the subcommittee. They went back to their respective boards and then the three respective boards came to a conclusion on their own. So where are these conservation easements? As Terry mentioned, we've got several areas with natural surface trails. Twin Buttes is a dedicated open space that was donated to the city. It did not require purchase and it also does not have a conservation easement on it. That's part of why it was chosen for the trial period. It also was chosen for the trial period because it's not, we don't have trails that connect onto adjacent land management-owned land. So there was not a use conflict with our neighbors. There are three conservation easements on different portions of Horse Gulch. There are two conservation easements in the Dalla Mountain Park area. One is all of what folks are familiar with, with Dalla Mountain Park. And then on the saddle that connects the trail system across and over to Animus City Mountain, there's a small conservation easement there as well. And then Overend Mountain Park is one. So that's a total of six easements that have natural surface trails on them.
So as Amy said, that we did have multiple meetings, a joint board meeting, multiple joint subcommittee meetings. They took it back to their individual boards. Each individual board came up with a recommendation to City Council, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Met quickly and made a decision quickly at their February ninth meeting. Immediately following the first joint board meeting, their recommendation is to rescind ordinance twenty eighteen, twenty-five in the Durango Municipal Code and allow the State of Colorado House Bill seventeen, one-one, one-one-five-one to guide the inclusive management of e-mountain bikes on cities' natural surface trails, limited to class one e-mountain bikes. That carried by a vote of five to three. The Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board went through the full process, went participated in all the joint subcommittee meetings. And then at their July eleventh meeting came to their recommendations, which are two. One is to recommend to City Council to pursue amendments to the three conservation easements in the Horse Gulch area to allow class one e-bikes. That carried three to two. Their second recommendation was to recommend to City Council to not pursue amendments to conservation easements in Overend Mountain Park, Dalla Mountain Park. And that includes the Hamilton-Ruey Conservation Easement. And this is for all classes of e-bikes. That passed three to two. The third Advisory Board was the Multimodal Advisory Board. They were unable to come up and agree upon a recommendation, so they did not provide one. Any questions about those? Moving on. Staff does have a recommendation. After years of, you know, discussion, going through the Joint Board process, talking to our individual boards, we are recommending that City Council authorize staff to work with appropriate legal counsel to prepare a request to La Plata Open Space Conservancy for amendment to the three Horse Gulch Conservation Easements. And this is just for class one. We came to our own recommendation based on the, you know, the extensive public engagement that we've had and the desire for e-bike opportunities in the city's natural surface areas. Horse Gulch is the largest open space area. It has diverse skill levels of trails and opportunities for trail users to disperse as opposed to the other two, which are a little bit tighter and closer. And the trail systems might be not as conducive to allow sightlines and things like that. As mentioned, Horse Gulch will connect to the future Durango Mesa Park Trail System. And as we mentioned, Durango Mesa Park intends to allow e-bikes in that location. And there are opportunities to mitigate impacts for conservation values at the Horse Gulch area and those, those do exist. And as Amy did mention, we also recognize that our adjacent land managers, BLM, private land managers, would have to go through a NEPA process or something like that. So there might be conflicting boundaries and use of e-bikes in one location versus another. So that's staff's recommendation. Moving on, there is a fiscal impact to this. As one of our public commenters alluded to, there is a three thousand dollar fee for an amendment request. The first thousand dollars is a sunk cost. The remaining two thousand dollars would be used for additional fees and services and legal fees, things like that, that LPOSC might incur. So we may or may not get those funds back. But the, putting all three together, we would be, I'm looking at a nine thousand dollar cost for Horse Gulch alone. If we did all six of them, we'd be looking at eighteen thousand dollars. We would propose that we pay for this out of the two thousand and five open space parks, trails, sales tax fund. We are not going into this blind. We understand that there will be an enormous amount of staff time. The amendment process can be onerous and I'm sure Amy could explain that if you have questions about that. But it could be a year process to go through this amendment to the conservation easement. So there will be staff expenses. And then there could be third-party expenses, legal counsel's appraisal services. We might need to do biological assessments to see if we can balance out the conservation values within those conservation easement areas. And then LPOSC might also have additional funds that they would be requesting from us. So it's not necessarily just nine thousand dollars. It could be more expensive. Lastly, if authorized to pursue amendment, staff is aware of and will adhere to the LPOSC amendment policy. They've given that to us. We've looked through it. Amy actually helped develop it when she was over at LPOSC for, for a time period. And in all honesty, an amendment is not guaranteed. So just wanted to make sure that you're all aware of that. With that, we'll open it up to questions and we're looking for tonight is direction on how we should proceed with pursuing a conservation easement amendments at one or all three of the areas.
May I jump in with a question?
Yes.
And Amy, you can probably fill me in probably best, no offense, Terry. But when the easements were obtained, was it obtained primarily for hiking use or was it obtained with mountain bike specifically in mind or was that an add-on?
So all three of the conservation easements that are at Horse Gulch, and they're very similar to our other mountain parks. The city of Durango applied for Great Outdoors Colorado GOCO funding with an interest in protecting natural scenic open space, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities. And they all specify passive, non-motorized recreation. So as it, the documents surrounding the easements delve into what exactly all those values entail. It does list hiking and biking and it doesn't prioritize one over the other. But the sticky wicket there is the passive, non-motorized recreation.
And then also in your early setting up of this up or at any point in the sense, have you looked at, and not that I'm suggesting you do this, I just want to get a sense of it. Have you looked at days for hiking and days for mountain biking? Because my own experience has been as a hiker, you know, having not even an electric bicycle, but a very fast-moving self-pedaled cyclist training on a downhill when you're hiking up and uphill.
As over the, the years of this conversation, we've definitely been engaged with Advisory Board and community members on ways to address the user conflict. It's not been something obviously that we've moved toward because it's not in effect. But the designated days, designated trails, those are examples and models that other communities have used. A lot of the other communities that have that as an example, their population is exceptionally larger than Durango. So it's definitely been part of our conversation. It's not what has been the moving force bringing us here tonight. Thank you so much.
I would add, given our multi-use, multipurpose trail system, it's not something that the Durango area has necessarily looked at. But I think we heard Mary Monroe Brown bring up a potential for an overall master plan for trails. That is something staff is actually thinking might be a good idea as well. It's something that we might want to consider engaging in in the coming future. So we can have those conversations about talking, so that we could talk about directional trail systems or, you know, trying to find ways to mitigate some of that user conflict out there.
And my final question, and thank you for indulging me, council. Did you have conversations with Trails Two Thousand about their preference for e-bike use on the trails?
They've been very engaged in the whole process, attending almost all of the meetings that I can recollect. And it's my understanding that they're supportive of e-bikes on the trail system.
Thank you.
There's one thing I, I want to also, before we open it up for more questions, one other thing I think is important for you all to know. And Amy's reached out, talked to not only the state of Colorado, the Colorado Open Space Association, but also the land trusts throughout the United States. And this would be the first time that a conservation easement amendment process would be taking place to amend the conservation easement for e-bikes. So we would be setting precedent here in the, in the city of Durango and we, for the nation. And we would be very much watched. Just wanted to make sure that you're aware that this is, would be creating some precedent.
Questions from council?
I think it's exciting to finally be moving to, moving to more work to get this done for the next year or whatever. I, yeah, I'm in support of staff's recommendation. And I think it's time to open it up to Horse Gulch. It makes perfect sense going into Durango Mesa Park and over in that area. So yes, I'm in full support. Thank you for your presentation and all your work.
I would also like to ask of council, I mean, there's one question to be in full support of that. But the, some of the folks in the public comment today challenged us as a council to go bigger or farther and to think about a plan for all of the parks. And you're presenting a first step. Have, do you have a position on the other parks and opening them up?
Jump in when you feel we, yep. Right now, we feel that going and addressing conservation easements at the Horse Gulch area is prudent. Probably the best step forward. Overend and Dalla maybe are a little bit different user type that goes to those two park areas. So maybe a little bit more neighborhood oriented, maybe a little bit more hiking and pedestrian oriented. Not that they don't get mountain bike use. But we know, also understand that Horse Gulch is the area that might be leaning towards more of a mountain bike emphasis. And, and it just lends itself a little bit better towards mountain biking and the possibility of e-bikes out there. Just because it's a larger system, the sightlines and the trails are a little bit better and things like that, so.
I would say too, with your comment about, you know, a full analysis of like all the trails and getting maybe potential one ways, because I've got all of them. And Horse Gulch is definitely way easier to see versus, you know, Overend and the other. And so that might be a good first step and then moving that way. Once we get the full trail master plan like you were talking about, but sorry to jump in, Amy, I didn't mean that.
Yeah, that's fine. I was gonna say, the amendment process, part of what that requires is that there is no net negative impact on the conservation values and no negative impact on the other conservation values. Amending a conservation easement can be incredibly grueling. Terry mentioned one year, I have never seen an amendment process end in less than a year. They can last several years because there is no example to look at, look at anywhere in the nation to say, we are going to go back to a public recreational conservation easement and add in motorized use. Even though they're electric motors, it still is a big change in the perspective of a conservation easement. And so some options that may be out there, and I'm drawing from examples through NEPA processes where e-bikes are being allowed on different federal lands. Some of the mitigation offsets that are being used are winter seasonal closures, decreasing the density of trails per acre to make sure that you're not negatively impacting wildlife habitat, potentially only designating some trails, not all. Sometimes it's a matter of designating areas where no trails will be built if the trails will add in a new use. So we don't know because this process has never happened for any other land trust. And our, our partner is very engaged at a national level. That's La Plata Open Space Conservancy. So for them to also look for guidance as the conservation easement, this is going to be a heavy lift and a massive process. And so just to set that expectation, it's not, we're going to add in e-bikes and nothing else is going to change. And so just to set that expectation, it's not, we're going to add in e-bikes and nothing else is going to change. It may be that the only way that we can say we are going to add in this use means there may be areas where we don't build more trails, or there may have to be an area with no trails, or we just don't know until we trigger the process and start to figure it out. There's not been a lot of wildlife studies specific to e-bikes. There have been a couple of examples. They were very cost costly for the federal government to radio collar mule deer and elk. And it took years to come up with conclusions on what happens to wildlife when people are moving faster, no matter what the means of moving faster is. And then how do you offset that and mitigate it? So we don't know until we have your blessings to proceed and open that that conversation. But I do want to be very clear on that, that the amendment doesn't mean, hey, give us something. Because a decade ago, we promised we were protecting this for generations to come. So you know, it's kind of.
And focusing on one area will be a little bit easier than focusing on three separate areas.
So you're expecting that amendment process to take potentially over a year?
Easily.
Easily. So really, truly, we're not talking about having e-bikes being allowed in Horse Gulch anytime soon?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, since I'm speaking, I'm going to go ahead. That's a disappointment, honestly. I have been involved, you know, with Parks and Recreation Board prior to council. And we've been talking about e-bikes for years and years and years. And it's disappointing to me to hear that it's going to take at least another year to get them even into Horse Gulch. I know we we've allowed them in twin buttes, which is progress, but this is really, really slow progress. And so it's disappointing for me to hear that. I wish at a minimum, we could bring forth an alternative. You know, I'm, I know that the state is allowing, you know, I'm, I'm kind of of the school of thought that we should be trying to emulate our regulations at the state level and allowing class one e-bikes on our trails. Because they've been deemed appropriate at the state level and as a mountain biking, you know, and biking Mecca. It seems that we should be potentially one of the more progressive communities as far as access and inclusion instead of such a very, very conservative approach that we've taken as a community. So I'm disappointed in it, honestly. And I, I wish that we were going to have a different answer here tonight.
I would just like to say it's the conservation easement and the process that we need to go through for the amendment that that's really taking the time. It's not that we can do anything about it. If we could speed it up, we definitely would. If you look at the Fruta community, which I came from, they just went through an EPA process for 18 road to allow e-bikes up there. But that was on their own land, their own process. We need to go through the process through the Open Space Conservancy. So we're having to follow the rules and just do it. So.
Understand that. Are there other trails that we could be considering opening up? I mean, Horse Gulch just sounds like we picked one that has three conservation easements in it. We should be moving forward in that, absolutely. But are there others that we could be considering as an alternative for allowing a sport that is really, really taking ground and evolving heavily?
The opportunity I see is for trail to be built. And the connection up into the Durango Mesa Park area, which we're working with them. There are several sections of trail that we're looking at constructing, potentially even as early as next year, if we could get it designed and funded and everything like that. But it's looking at the trail system, it's hard to get the trail to find a trail that doesn't necessarily go through a conservation easement.
It is.
It's hard to find a trail that doesn't necessarily go through an easement. So.
And if I may, I know the process is very onerous. Durango still remains, we have the highest concentration of trails per acre of any community in the state of Colorado. And our open space sales tax and being able to leverage those funds to get GOCO dollars to buy these mountain parks is what was our springboard, to be that community. Now we hit a bit of a hiccup because of this particular use, but that is still an amazing foundation. La Plata Open Space Conservancy recognizes that. They've obviously allowed just about every trail request. I mean, rarely have we had something where we didn't take a trail request to them and it be approved. So we have a great partner there. Recreation is obviously one of the conservation values and is why GOCO has granted us millions of dollars to create the open space program that we have. But we are absolutely in a different position than a lot of other communities are. So some other municipalities use their conservation easements to preserve areas that don't have public recreation. We have conservation easements with public recreation, but as a community, we set them up to be passive, non-motorized. So it's it's challenging right now, but I do want to make sure that that's something that we shed a light on. Significant resource that other communities don't have, and our conservation easement is made impossible. We now have to go through this due diligence process.
Well, yeah, I appreciate you explaining that to me. That's helpful. I think we should make that, try to make that really clear to the community. It's unfortunate, actually, that it's taken us this long to get here. So now we can start that process. And I think we should move forward as quickly as possible and try to, you know, I personally, as one counselor, am very in support of moving forward methodically and appropriately, but forward. And at the same time, if we can look at other trails to simultaneously move forward on, I think it's a progressive thing to do. As a role model biking community, I feel like we should be leading the way if we can. And if we are leading the way nationally in getting these easements pushed through, then great, let's try it. But I'm supportive of it. Pretty much in all areas. So. Thank you, counselors. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I it is disappointing how long it takes, very much so. So a couple of thoughts about that and about how these conservation easements came into place in the first place. So GOCO requested conservation easements. They didn't requires, they didn't tell us what the conservation easements had to say.
No, but we said what they would.
Yeah, we said in our application what the conservation easements would say. GOCO didn't demand that. So what I would suggest is, given that GOCO is a state agency, and given that the state has declared e-bikes to be bicycles, that GOCO possibly would be willing to say, you know what? We stand with the state. We are a state agency, and we don't intend that e-bikes are not bicycles, anything other than bicycles. And be able to give the La Plata Open Space Conservancy a green light from their position of willingness to allow the conservancy, I realize that's their choice, but they're also all, there's all together. It's all mixed up together. So if we could get a partner in GOCO in making this go faster, I think we might, it might be much more successful. Just, just a thought.
We have engaged GOCO, and they are remaining that they will not take a stance. It is between the landowner and the land trust.
So I'm not suggesting that they take a position between the landowner and the land trust. I'm suggesting that they make it clear what their position is regarding e-bikes as classed as bikes and not as a motorized vehicle. And because that will lend weight to the conversation, even though they're not making a choice between the two, they're clarifying their position and what they would expect in the future of other conservation easements. The other thing is, I know from one of the former board members of Durango Trails that when they discussed e-bikes on the trail systems over the past few years, one of the biggest concerns is that, and this is a concern just in general, and when I was writing last week, I it gets reinforced every time. I've been on the natural lands board since 2010 for a couple of years, and then now back on the liaison, and this comes up every, it's been going on for years and years and years. We don't have good signage in any of our open spaces. Half the time, you don't know what trail you're on. You don't know what the level of difficulty of that trail is. And Durango Trails' concerns were to mitigate the concerns that the community has. For example, that someone on an e-bike who is not as proficient as at bicycle riding will go into areas that they shouldn't be and either injure themselves or cause other complications. And if we had a system where, for example, you could ride your e-bike logically, telegraph without, you know, having too many skills. I mean, there's places you'd probably have to get off and walk, you know, especially the top and whatever. But if you were to take that left turn and go down what used to be Anasazi, you would be way over your head if you didn't have proper bike skills. But we have nothing that tells us that about our trails. So you can go all over in Horse Gulch and any of our other trail systems and end up on a trail that is either less demanding than you thought it would be, or way more demanding than you thought it would be, because we don't have that anywhere. And I know we might have a map that might indicate that, but in the moment, it's really, really important to know what's happening. So I know that Trail, Durango Trails would support better signage with better information. And also to that comment that was made today about the 15 mile an hour speed limit on the art, we have the same problem on the art. So we don't have enough education about speed. We don't have enough education about etiquette. We don't have enough education about conditions. I don't remember where I was just recently, but you come around the corner and there was work being done and there was no announcement being done. So I think we need to also address the idea that we need to have an informed user base. And we need to take responsibility for that. Yes, we can't mandate manners. I agree with that, but we need to take responsibility for being informative and creating safe places for people to be.
Thank you, Councilor Osmond.
Yeah, I'm going to echo to a certain degree prior comments. Besides signs and so on, I will stick to the e-bike use. To me, the e-bike, I support e-bikes. I think if we speak about some of the approaches we are taking, I like what Mr. Howell earlier said. To me, twin buttes was phase one and the first step. And everything else is hopefully not going to go through the same process as we had with twin buttes, which was quite an effort to get that at least moved forward. And now this one for one trail or one trail system. So ideally, to me, it would be a decision today or direction today to get the path forward for e-bikes wherever it needs to be, starting with Horse Gulch, but not having to go through every area with all these meetings and community engagement and so on. So that is the approach, my preference, to have something that continues the allowing the use of e-bikes on multiple trail systems over time.
So may I make a motion?
No, I'm still, actually, I can.
I'm still speaking.
I can't.
No, I'm sorry.
I'm still speaking.
I apologize. I thought you were finished.
No, I'm not finished. And the second part is that to make the oh man, I lost my train of thought. To make it easier, to make the amendments to an easement. One would think this, the easiest way to do is to follow state regulations. So if there's later some other classification of an e-bike or regular bike that we don't have to go through a whole amendment process again to fine tune a new definition, let's say, whatever. So my thought process would be to follow state guidelines on definitions for whatever it is that we end up doing, in this case, e-bikes. But then you go looking at it from a practical perspective, the state defines class one and class two e-bikes as regular bikes. And I think I go back to your comment. And does the easement specifically say you can have regular bikes, but you cannot have a regular bike with a motor? And what is, so this is where it becomes confusing, because is there even a need to replace and to amend an easement if the definition is not clear? And if we can clarify what the definition is, a regular bike is considered by state, the class one and class two e-bikes as well, then we don't have to do much. So is is that explored well enough? And this is where the GOCO definition and easement language with the La Plata, is there a way to prevent all this from happening or?
That that's exactly why we engaged a conservation easement attorney is to answer that specific question. And they came back that yes, you will need to go through the easement or amendment process.
So if the, if the amendment process is required, let's try and do it in a way that we don't face this when another definition comes along or another toy or whatever beneficial tool. And say, we're following state guidelines or definitions, and that way we don't have to deal with it. Does that make sense?
Yes, except that the state definition for class one does say with motors, assisted with motors. So that's the part that we have to hash out with LPOSC, is that the definition does say.
Well, another definition in one of the forms is the state defines class one and class two e-bikes as regular bikes. I just pulled it up on the agenda.
It removed e-bikes from the definition motorized and further classified them. So whether or not that language is appropriate is what our process will have to require.
Okay, well, you're obviously way more knowledgeable than I am. I'm just trying to see, can we do the amendment in a way that if future developments take place, that we don't go through this similar process for us?
That's very much a concern when we have one wheels and segways and three wheels and everything that can have a motor on it.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's it.
It's a huge community concern.
I'd like to share with counsel just my own thinking, because I agree with some of the things that have been said. So before we actually go to a motion, I would like to say that I think that e-bikes have, you know, they are here and they are what makes this, it helps us achieve inclusivity in this community. So I actually think that we aren't going far enough in the thinking by just limiting, by starting just with Horse Gulch. I think we need to take this on in a serious way at all, how we address it. So as Counselor Youssef said, I too am discouraged that it's, we've taken, it's going to take this long. And I don't want to waste it by then having all the other hearings. So I would like to hear if counsel is more supportive of that general policy, which is what we've been kind of hearing, but I'm not there yet. So that may become out in the form of a motion. I'd also though like to say, Amy, that I heard you about the conservation easements, particularly as it relates to wildlife, because wildlife is also very much a part of our sense of place and who we are. And so recognizing that with something that's going to be more available for people of all ages and capabilities, we also are going to have an impact. And there is a responsibility there to maintain that sense of how we all view Durango. And I believe wildlife is a component of that. So I don't have an answer. But my own view is I would like to encourage you to think longer term and bigger rather than just one barrel starting.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? When you say bigger and better, would you mean not only the class one and two or one e-bikes, but also address one-wheelers, what is another, scooters, electric scooters? Or how do we prevent this from happening?
I think we have to try to think into the future, right? Where is it going? And so I think the issue is when we're setting up, I mean, pushing it for mountain bikes was probably a push back then. And no one foresaw, maybe, maybe no one foresaw the abundance of the e-bike. Maybe they did. They just didn't dare to push it. But I think we have to look at, you know, there's the woman who wrote today about commuting on the Animus River Trail on her one wheeler doing, you know, eight miles an hour. And perhaps we just hadn't thought about those potentials. So I, I am encouraging, you are encouraging counsel to consider having us think about what that future is going to look like. And I'm not calling for motorcycles or things like that. But I am calling for more than just Horse Gulch, if it's going to take a year. So that's what I wanted to encourage.
I think it's good to think of like the bigger picture and the bigger vision, especially knowing that it's going to take a year to get through or more of these conservation easements. I am in full support of a phased approach. I don't think you should necessarily go and like apply for everything right now and open everything right when you get it. And like us like backpedaling on, you know, how we're going to have proper signage for everything, like implementing it in a smart way, obviously, like I believe you would do anyways. But I agree, like that big vision of yes, eventually we want e-bikes on every natural surface trail. It might be after we have a master plan for our trails. It might be after we have a plan on how to implement better signage, one-way trails for certain ones. But like, yes, first, we're going to focus on the easements at Horse Gulch and opening that up and making it safe and effective and enforcement. And then, you know, next step, next step, and then sure, other big vision things like what are we going to allow and how? I mean, I just can't imagine us saying, I don't know. Okay, you guys are the experts on it. I'm not going to get into like other details, but that's where my, my mind goes.
Just to let you know, we have had conversations about what other devices are coming down the pike. And we would be, as we're going through this process, wanting to take a look and make sure, because we're going to get what shot at this, we're probably not going to get multiple shots at this. We want to try and look at it and be as forethoughtful in this as possible. And then the other thing we were wanting to do is, is really having an ability to focus on horse sculch so that we could kind of have a blueprint so that we can move forward, maybe in a more expeditious manner as we do some other areas, if that is indeed what the community wants.
I would support the overall higher, higher goal of moving forward, absolutely. With horse gulch, if that's most effective for you to focus on that now. But I am supportive of taking this across the board much more expeditiously if we can. And being more, for more inclusivity, I'd like to just stay focused on e-bikes for now. I think that there's going to, I don't want to get bogged down in the new things, the new technology that's going to come up. If you guys want to try to stay up with that this year while we're moving forward, great. But right now we've been dealing with e-bikes for a decade and I'd like to try to push this forward as a biking community.
I have a little question for, for staff. Would it be an option to make the amendment very broad, all motorized vehicles? With the understanding that the, what we allow as a city on our trails is going to be restricted to whatever we're going to say and decide so that the amendment is broad enough for future developments and we don't have to go through that process again? And we still have the opportunity to slowly change as necessary? Because even the regular bike is defined as class one and class two, and we are looking at recommendations only for class one. So is that something that would be an option?
If I may, so if I may, I'd like to comment on that and also on what you said, Counselor Youssef. I think one of our goals here is that our outdoor recreation is human powered. And I think if we stick with the concept of human powered movement on our open space, we will address the things that we think would be challenges to that. And we don't have to be specific about what the technology is. Human powered actually would also preclude class two e-bikes being there because they are not just pedalists, they can also be thrusters, purely throttle control. And that was my concern about on the River Trail with the class two bikes. So I think that if we, if we address it that way, then we don't have to keep going back and back and back and back. Now, if you think that our open space ever will, we will ever really want to have non-human powered movement. And, you know, we can, horses right now are excluded from city property. So that's not powered, but it's, they're already excluded at this point.
Can I ask staff to respond to my question? Is it, would it be a possibility even or is it not possible? My question was, could you make the amendment to the easement broader? As in all motorized vehicles with the understanding that you?
Depends on what the offset is to the other conservation values. So it's, it's, that's where the heavy lift of the process becomes. The more we ask for, the more we have to give back to find that balance, the longer this process goes.
I was going to say, will it limit the potential of getting it approved to, like the more you ask for?
It can be, I mean, it there is no precedent for conservation easement being amended to allow motorized recreation. So I, I really can't answer what the process is going to look like. All I know is similar processes like BLM and FRUTA, they go through their NEPA process and determining where there are areas that that land manager owns that are wildlife habitat with no trails, where trail density can get more concentrated. The Forest Service uses the model of anywhere motors are allowed, they have a decreased density of trails per acre. So we have to start the whole process looking at our parks to say, how do we bring in the use that was restricted when we dedicated the easement and then strike a balance? And so the process will hash that out.
And it was a use that didn't exist at the time. It was a use that didn't exist at the time. So that's another challenge.
Uh, can I just add one final thing? And I think we're going to have a motion here. I think two points. I think it's about, not only do we have a chance to lead as a community on use of recreational use of our open space, but about being an inclusive community. And I think that's going to be, it could be a powerful statement there. To Counselor Baxter's comment on, on signage, because I do think that's important as we deal with this. I want to remind everyone that we do have a commitment to translation services. And if we want folks using, a diverse group of people using our open space, they need to understand it. And I think we need to make that effort as well. So I'm talking about translation of signages as well. But I'd like to finally say, I think, I think Counselor Baxter, your human powered option, I'd be interested in not tonight getting your view, but being able to explore that. Cause I do think it gives an open-ended capacity to, for the future, rather than, than naming everyone. So I would be interested in that. And finally, I would like to say that the point on GOCO, I do actually think we have a potential to actually push a little bit on GOCO because they are a powerful financially funded state organization. And it seems odd that they would be out of compliance with state regulations in that regard or not have a stand. So I also think there's an opportunity there to ask, not them to get in the middle of our discussions with landowners, but to actually have a statement about inclusivity in recreational activity.
And I just wanted to clarify my understanding of the state law. The, the state is not categorizing class one or class two e-bikes as motorized. And that somehow keeps getting thrown into the classification of what they're not classifying them as motorized, the state.
No, it's, my understanding was that they've been removed from the definition of motorized as registration laws apply, and then it's up to the local jurisdiction of where bikes are allowed. But the, the House bill does not say they are now considered non-motorized.
But they don't say they're considered motorized.
For the purposes of registration.
Right, so they are, so they are considered bicycles. They are not considered motorized, they're not considered motorized vehicles. Okay, I just want to be really clear about that because those two, the word motorized keeps showing up with the bikes.
Sorry, and it's because they, they reclassified them with three classifications that say assisted with a motor. So it's not that they've removed the conversation there. And that's where the non-motorized regulation or conservation easement, it's, it still sees that they are assisted with a motor.
I just wanted to make that clear. So I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to pursue amendments to the three horse gulch conservation easements in order to allow class one e-bike use on horse gulch natural trails and to pursue future amendments to conservation easements on all city open space with the consideration of human powered movement on our open space.
Great, I'll second that. Discussion.
I, first I, I'm going to follow staff definition of what needs to be done regarding amendments. I want to make that very clear. If you, obviously you have done your homework. So if you say it's motorized, we need to amend it, then I'm going to follow that. On the motion that was made and second, I, I think we're going to have to clarify what is human powered to? Well, we're making the motion, so I, is it, so is it?
We're not going to define everything in the motion. That comes, that comes.
I think it becomes too complex.
So for me, that comes later.
So to me, it's, it's too complex to just approve. I'll vote against that. I, I just think we're making things too complex. It would be nice to, to see the horse girls move forward as it is. But no, I, I think you added too much in there.
May I get the city attorney? If we go through this process, you're going to need to bring us a recommendation or a resolution. So it's going to have to have some kind of second hearing or something to that effect. So clearly the staff will have time to broaden, provide examples of what human powered might look like, rather than us incorporating every possibility into this motion.
What I understood the motion to say is that you're authorizing staff to move forward with the amendment to the conservation easement now in the area of horse sculch, right? And then move forward into other areas. That's, I guess the clarification, is that where the human powered aspect comes in?
It comes in, in the entire, in both cases, because if we go to allow class one e-bikes, I think we need to, to deal with the problem that we might be having in the future with other, other types of transportation. And I wasn't recommending an ordinance yet, because that wouldn't come until later.
Right, right. The, the final approval would be what you're, as I understand it, you're authorizing staff to go undertake the process of negotiating an amendment to the conservation easement, easement now. And then, of course, you would have to approve that amendment before it would become final. So if staff were to go under this motion and negotiate with the holder of the easement on the basis that we wanted to change the language to include or to, or to be limited to human powered movement in the open space, then that's the grounds that they would take to go negotiate, as I understand it. Is that?
Well, so one of the reasons why the inclusion of human powered is to offset the class one e-bike possibility and the conservation equality. So by saying, here's what we will allow, but here's what we won't allow, it provides some balance there.
Class three is also human powered and that's not what either, either of these boards.
That's why I said class one e-bike in the motion.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, I.
So we were talking about.
Well, then I'll do it, I'll amend the motion to, to deny class three e-bikes.
I, can we?
Do you, is that, would that?
Since the motion is on the table, I just, if we stick with this and staff comes up with the language for it and they take into account some of your concerns and suggestions, then we move forward.
But I think that that's the point, right? Is that we're trying to tell staff like, hey, like look bigger picture, which they already are doing. We would like to see it not so specific, just in case something else comes up. We don't have to go through this again. You don't want to go through it again, right? Okay, great. And so I think that's all it's saying. If they come back to us and say, hey, council, we tried to go forward, our, you know, conservation attorney or whoever says we shouldn't do this because it's going to prevent us from getting passed. We should stick to class one. I'm sure council would say, okay, let's stick to class one. But I think it's good to look at the bigger picture. That's all we're trying to say is it's okay to look at a bigger picture. We're still passing exactly what they want us to pass.
Has everyone had a chance to speak during discussion? Can we have the vote, please?
Mayor Pratim Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosferi?
Absolutely, yes. Okay. All right. All right. The next one is among council. If I have it correctly, Counselor Bosman's offered to be the liaison to the Community Relations Commission, which meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month. But, and I believe the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meets on the second Wednesday of the month. They are not on the same day. I think that needs to be clarified in the materials. And Counselor Bosman's request was because he was taking this on, would any other counselor? I think the original counsel was, would I be willing to? And I actually have commitments on Wednesdays, standing commitments for council. Would any counselor be willing to take on Parks and Rec? That's one question. And then it becomes the trading game of, what do we, but I will remind folks that at the last meeting, we did discuss, I believe it was the last one, that we would hold off on the most part on reassignments because we're waiting to get the recommendation from staff on feedback about altering some of the boards. So I want, my goal tonight is to solve the Parks and Rec advisory liaison position. And if we need a longer discussion, I would suggest that be a different day.
I'll just jump in and say, I cannot do another night evening meeting with my kids and sports and travel. Like I'm their personal free Uber driver, so I cannot do an evening meeting at all.
Understand, and I have a standing wildfire and watershed protection fund meeting.
I actually would love to do it, but I am literally for the next three months unavailable on Wednesday nights, traveling and out of town for the next two months. And then I have a commitment.
Counselor Baxter?
I could do it, yes.
Thank you. All right, resolved. Very good.
Do we, do we have to vote on that, Dirk?
I would have voted on it, yes.
All right, motion.
I'm not going to.
I'll make a motion to have Counselor Baxter take over the liaison role of Parks and Rec Board.
Seconds.
Discussion. Vote, please.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Mayor Pratim Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Nosferi?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have a few more items yet tonight. And I just want to remind everyone what is still happening. We will have a bit, but the schedule has not changed. We will have quick reports and actions. We will go into a possible action, discussion of possible action concerning a motion to hold an executive session. We'll discuss that specifically. And then we'll come out of that executive session with some possible action items. So I think there's change in that schedule. We're still proceeding with council reports next. Does anyone have, and I believe that we kind of had short council reports on.
Council reports on the last time. Anyone have reports to provide for us to share with your fellow counselors?
I'm going to go first with the library. I'm going to be very brief. I'm hoping we can go fast because, I don't know, it's eight o'clock, it's been a long day. I just wanted to get a quick library advisory board update. Luke already presented, so half of what I suggested I already took out. But I wanted to give you guys an update. We introduced our Luke, you know, talked at our last advisory board meeting. It was great to have him there and present. It's just awesome to have him filling that role. So thank you so much. He talked about the survey that is going to be out, it was by the end of the last month. So by the end of month, as you guys remember, this is phase two of our work with the public advisory group. And the first phase with the feasibility analysis, this is the second phase, the gathering of public input. They're contracted to get 440 respondents by phone and in person for this survey. The data compilation will take a month to gather and then, and then put the formation, information together. They're asking kind of, who are you, how do you use the library? They explain the middle levy and try to find out if they vote yes or no. So it's very interesting. So just wanted you guys to know, that's in the works. We're on phase two. Luke is preparing a report each month for our board meeting. It's so exciting to see this data. I've never seen anything like it. We actually had over 21,000 library visits in the month of July. That's just gigantic and which is 525 person increase over the month of, month of January. They had 2,241 public computer uses in the month of July, a 33% increase in January, and 64 public room bookings. So our library is well-used and a huge resource for our community. Thank you.
Other counselors?
Yeah, I'll go quick Airport Commission on the 18th. CMAR award is in progress. None construction was selected for the Phase 1A. They're under contract for pre-construction services. Phase 1A groundbreaking on target for 2023. I don't know what date I wrote there. Sometime in 2020, I think it's spring. I don't know what, I can't understand my writing right there. We talked about the rehab runway projects kicking off in less than three hours. Also during that time, there, Tony has organized like, since it's going to be closed, like a bunch of things that they're doing. They're doing commercial apron rehab, terminal deep clean, pump overhaul and water system repair, main parking lot rehab, a reroute, software upgrades, like all these things that they can do while it's closed. So we are still down 20% in seat capacity for 2019 due to nationwide pilot shortages. But we know the load factor is up, so we know there's a demand. We're just facing struggles with seat capacity. I also had the Creative Economy Commission on August 30th. We did the Drango Creeds Grant Round Two. It was approved. We have Animus River Inspiration Wheel that's going over by Oxbow. It's like kind of similar to the wheels that we got installed by the library, I think it is. So that's fun. The Powerhouse Public Plaza got approved for some plants and vegetation and like a facelift there. And then there's going to be a community watercolor mural and parklet over behind Durango Natural Foods over there in that little area before you hit the bridge, go into the skate park. And there'll be like some benches and this big watercolor mural that's really pretty. So we talked about lodgers tax application feedback. We talked about the artist called to action to replace the arch of history. And so kind of. Um, and so kind of talked about some ideas for that, and Tommy will work his magic and do whatever he does. Um, and then the DCD came to talk about a twenty twenty-three budget discussions. They have some really fun, like Native American Art Festival, um, weekly art markets. I don't know how to write this week, apparently, because I might, can't understand my long-term art and culture goals. So some really cool things that they're talking about in their budget for twenty twenty-three, so anyways, that's all I got.
Counselor Bosman?
Yeah, I attended the first commi- well, my first Community Relations Commission meeting on uh August twenty-fourth, so um more introduction to that team. It was a pleasure to be in that meeting. I uh discussed the next steps. They devoted upon the chair and the vice chair positions. Um, on soft committees, we had some discussion and strategic planning. Um, I think that's it for now. Hopefully, I'll be a bit more tuned in in the future.
No, I I, because he wasn't available, I went to the multimodal. So um they had a presentation by Drango Trails, as we talked about earlier today. Um, they also talked about their CIP projects and went over those again. And then the other interesting thing for me particularly was they talked about transit funding. Um, because at one point in time, when I was on the multimodal, we brought transit funding ideas to, um, Sarah's not here, darn, um, to the city council, and they did not pursue any of those ideas. And so the group is looking at those again, as well as possibly some others to bring forward to us for ideas of how to provide more funding for transit and to increase um uh routes and hours and decrease wait times. And since I'm talking, I will also mention that um I will not be here on September twelfth or the thirteenth. Uh, I have a natural lands board meeting at five-thirty on the twelfth and an Economic Alliance Investment Meeting at eight AM on the thirteenth. If anyone, uh, if any of the counselors would like to um sub for me, just let me know and I'll let you know about that. You want to do that one?
And let me look about the natural lands. Um, I, is that the same as a URA meeting?
Yes, and the thing is, it starts at five-thirty and the URA meeting's from four-thirty to six.
Yeah, I have to chair that, so.
I know, so it's a challenge. Um, you're, yeah, yeah, you won't be here, yeah, okay.
We'll come up with it. We'll come up with something.
Okay.
Um, are you finished?
Uh, yes.
So I just want to say I attended the CAST meeting, um, the Colorado, Colorado Association of Ski Towns in Salida. I will be writing up my multiple pages of notes to everyone, but I think there's two incredible takeaways. We talked a lot, I mean, a variety of issues from wildfire mitigation issues, DACA uh issues around how that's gonna impact if the Fifth Circuit finds that to be uh unconstitutional, how that it'll impact workers in Colorado. Um, we also talked at length about short-term rentals and the housing situation. And what so, and I'll put this in my notes, what multiple communities are doing is they're looking at how much money is lost in property taxes by not having those be deemed commercial and how to address some of that mitigation. It's interesting, I'll I'll provide everyone what the feeds structure is, what many communities are doing, so that was one. The other one was that Salida, and I went to visit their park. They had a safe parking place right in town by one of their, their Centennial Park. Uh, and it was designed primarily for those people living in their cars who are seasonal workers. Um, they had no significant incidents during the summer. They had significant, uh, you know, expectations, but it was well-lit, there was internet, there was access, it was in a park. Um, and so I I will write that up, but I think it's worth at least um hearing about what other communities are doing because they are all struggling with the same variety of populations of unhoused people and what they need. And a long uh hours of conversation on short-term rentals. And Melissa, this was one that came out with the um CML. Some of the thinking about signing on to that housing bill was that that would really benefit the larger cities and not so much the rural areas because the emphasis was on sixty percent uh AMI. And in some of these rural communities, they're saying that they have to offer two hundred percent of AMI to address housing for their workforce. And so we were curious to find out what CML thought. Before, we had been asked to sign on to that bill, you'll recall, uh, individually or as a council. And so as cast, we were gonna be looking to CML, so I wanted to give you a heads up on that. And I will write those notes up uh once I catch up. All right, no more reports. We um, we need to consider going into uh executive session, and I am going to read it, but then any motion that is made needs to read the entire uh motion, not just so move. Understand? Yeah, I can hand to you what I read if you'd. So um, let me find my, I've got one right here, but I will read it. So this is item fourteen point one, and it is discussion and possible action concerning a motion to hold an executive session to conduct a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice as permitted in CRS twenty-four-six-four oh-two-four B. And you can refer to the agenda packet for the full information.
And actually, that's why we wanted to read it. Um, Madam Mayor, so let me hand you the full version of it. I'm sorry. Because the software for the agenda doesn't allow enough characters.
This involved?
Yes, but would you?
Can you read it first?
Yes.
All right, here, there's some. Oh, it does have more, sorry. Discussion and possible action concerning a motion to hold an executive session to conduct a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions as permitted in CRS twenty-four-six-four oh-two-four B to discuss particular matters related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the ci- the city from John Simpson, seeking certain financial documents under the Colorado Open Records Act and separate notices of intent to file a legal, legal action in district court against the city from Matt Roan and John Simpson, seeking the recording of the executive session held by city council on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, under the Colorado Open Records Act. Are there any questions about this? Is there a motion? And you'll need to read the entire motion.
I'll move to go into discussion and possible, possible action concerning a motion to hold.
What suggestion is to make a motion to hold an executive?
Okay, I'll make a motion to hold an executive session to conduct a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions as permitted in CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh-two to discuss particular matters related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from John Simpson, seeking certain financial documents under the Colorado Open Records Act and separate notices of an intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from Matt Roan and John Simpson, seeking the recording of the executive session held by city council on July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, under the Colorado Open Records Act.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I think maybe you missed, just to clarify, it's twenty-four-six-four oh-two-four B is the statute.
Okay, can I just say that?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-six, twenty-four dash six dash four oh-two-four B.
Second.
Any discussion?
I had the easy part.
Yes.
May we have the vote?
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Nosferi?
Yes, thank you. We will go into executive session. I have no uh uh estimate of when we will be coming out.
He's the youngest secretary of staff.
Yeah, no you don't have to do it.
I thought you were like, I can't believe this is true.
We should all talk down there after tonight.
I could drop you.
First of all.
Thank you.
My.
Let's do this. Okay. And we convene this meeting at 10:30 PM. For the record, council met in executive session to conduct a conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions as permitted in CRAS 2464024B to discuss particular matters related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from John Simpson seeking certain financial documents under the Colorado Open Records Act and separate notices of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from Matt Roan and John Simpson seeking the recording of the executive session held by the city council on July 27, 2022 under the Colorado Open Records Act. No decisions were made. If anyone who participated in the executive session believes the discussions went beyond the proper scope of the executive session, please state your objections now. Seeing none, the next item of the agenda is discussion and possible action related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from John Simpson seeking certain financial records and a request to release the documents under the provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act. There's two separate requests. Council thoughts?
Dirk, could you go over the three options we have for 15.1?
Yeah, the request is essentially to have council release the requested financial documents so that would, you know, require a motion that you, that someone make to release the requested documents. The other option would be to deny that request via motion or I suppose the third option would be to take, you know, neither action. So those are the three choices, as I said.
A third action requires some motion.
The third action would, yes, be no, would be no action, yeah, no motion.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to not release the files to Johnson Center that he's requesting. One second.
Discussion.
Actually, to be clear, their financial records are not files.
I'll make, or can I amend the motion to include financial records?
As, as he's requested.
As he's requested in his request.
I'll second again.
And I'll call for discussion.
Any discussion?
Then can we have a roll call, please?
May I approach and visa?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
No.
Aaron, no further.
Yes. Dirk, do you want to explain anything what the?
Let's go ahead and read the agenda item.
The agenda is 15.2, discussion and possible action related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from Matt Roan and John Simpson.
Actually, that's truncated also, so let's read down, sorry.
Sorry. The action is discussion and possible action related to a notice of intent to file a legal action in district court against the city from Matt Roan and John Simpson seeking the recording of the executive session held by city council on July 27, 2022 and the request to release the records under the provisions of the Colorado Open Records Act. And city attorney, can you please describe the actions, our options?
The options would be the same. This is a request for release of a recording of an executive session, you know, the recording of executive session from July 27, 2022. So, in fact, would you, I'm sorry, would you say that more? So the options again would be, or the courses of action for council would be to, you know, adopt a motion or make a motion and approve a motion to release the requested recording. The other option would be to make a motion to deny the requested recording and the third option would be, you know, to take no action at this time.
I'll make a motion to deny the requested recording.
I'll second. Any discussion from counsel? Let's have the vote.
May I approach and visa?
Yes.
Counselor Baxter?
Yes.
Counselor Bosman?
Yes.
Counselor Beal?
Yes.
Yes. On that note, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.